Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session. We do have our new mics this evening. You can tell, if you push it, you can tell whether it's on or off with the green and red light. So feel free to activate your mics here at this point.
Well, it's green.
Yeah, the air qual- or the sound quality sounds really good, yeah.
It's green.
We have only one agenda item tonight, and that is effective council members, public meetings, and rules of order. And we have our resident expert here. Thank you so much for joining us, Bob Widener. I'll turn it over to Bob.
Well, that was easy. Well, thank you for inviting me to come here. I'm actually a little bit of a homecoming here because back when I was in high school in the early seventies, I used to hang out at Cinderella City. And so I'm back in the hood, if you will. This brings back a lot of memories to be out here. But I want to thank you for having me come here. It is actually my pleasure to be here because you're letting me do what I love to do, which is to talk with city councils across the state and hopefully help them be what I would call more effective. It is a passion that I have to do this kind of work. I do it across the state. It's because I believe wholeheartedly that we make a difference. That local government is the place where we take a dollar bill and we do more for our citizens than any other government. That's just a fact of life. And I challenge anybody to prove me different on that one. I believe to my core being that we make a difference. And in every community I've ever worked, I know that I can go into that community, I can say, "I made a difference here." Hopefully positive, most of the time, right? But it is important that we do make a difference. We do make a major impact. So efficiency in government is probably really, really important to all of us. And that's why I go around the state doing this kind of training. You need to know a little bit about me, and not because I want you to say, "Oh, Bob, you're so great." You need to know where I'm coming from, and why I do this, and why I'm kind of passionate about it, and where I'm coming from. I, in 1986, was working for a local government, and I got a chance to be a law clerk. And I got to sit in on city council meetings with the city attorney in a very large city in Kansas. And I watched for more than a year and a half this council not do anything. And I asked the city council, the city attorney, "What's going on here?" This is going to be my career, and I'm watching this group of people basically beat each other up for a year and a half and accomplish absolutely nothing, to which he answered me, "It's all on them. It's all about them, and they're never going to succeed until they change." I followed that forward for now the next thirty years of my career, representing only local governments. And I have represented some of the worst and some of the best. I have been in council meetings where the mayor has taken a council member and bent them over the dais and pounded them physically, physically, on video. And I have that VCR if you want to see it. It's an older one. Okay? I have seen council members open every single council meeting with a session on, "Let's talk about the ethical violations that so-and-so did." And they would spend twenty or thirty minutes of every council meeting trying to one-up each other with regard to problems they created over the prior week. It was horrendously bad. But I have been with councils who have done it right, and I've watched them succeed.
Thank you.
And I have seen what they have done to make themselves succeed. And between the bad and the good, after thirty years, I figured it out, and there's a number of things that if we can all do, or think about, or confirm that we do it right, we will be more effective city council members and more effective city council bodies, and we actually serve our citizens better. And we are happier about doing it, too. Because I can't tell you how stressful it is, let alone to be a city attorney, having to sit through three or four hours worth of terrible city council meetings. But from my role, for a large portion of my career, I've been through thousands and thousands of public meetings. At one time, I, as a private practice in downtown with a large firm, I represented four different cities or counties which had meetings each week. So there were four nights of every week for ten years I sat through public meetings with these counties and these cities. And I learned a great deal. I learned, one, my wife loves the stuffing out of me to still be married today to me, after having spent that much time out of the office at night meetings. So that's the number-one thing. The other thing I've learned is that there are things that make a difference. There are things that I believe, if we think about, we become more effective and we serve our citizens better. Okay? My success tonight with you is if you will wake up and get a light bulb and say, "That makes sense to me," and either confirm that you're doing it, and you should still can do it, or that you're not doing it, maybe there might be some room for growth, at least on Bob's standard, not perhaps yours. But that's successful for me. If I can just trigger one or two or three of you to think that maybe I can improve, then I've succeeded. That's really what I've done. And maybe Inglewood will improve also, to the extent you need to have any improvement. What I'm not going to do tonight is regurgitate stuff that you will find in textbooks. None of what I'm telling you tonight, you will read anywhere. After thirty years of trying to find it, I can't find it. What it is, is observation from thirty years of watching councils get it right and not get it right. Okay? That's what it's all about. Now, this is not about you. None of what I'm going to say tonight is about Inglewood. It's not. I can tell you it's not, because every single thing I'm going to say, and every single slide you're going to see, I have said to at least thirty-six other governments, or groups of governments. This is just a message I convey to government. I have not sat down with your upper management and figured out what you're all about. In fact, I would probably be ill-prepared to answer specific questions that you have about your specific city. I'll try, because I'm a lawyer, and you can't get me to shut up. That's just part of the business, right? But I will try. But one thing I want to tell you as a disclaimer is that I'm not your attorney, and I don't know your city. And your city, your local county, your council, your city attorney is both younger and smarter and more experienced than I will ever be with you. And that's the person you should always defer to with regard to anything about municipal government. Do not take what I say and run down the road and say, "Bob said it. It must be true." I don't know your city. And in fact, there's a good reason why your local council is more important than I'll ever be to you, and we'll actually touch upon that tonight.
Mr. Widener, real quick, if you don't mind me interjecting. Are there any preliminary matters or questions? I think that was kind of a nice introduction that council has before we get off to the races here with Bob's presentation. Anybody have anything?
Do you want us to introduce ourselves, or are you?
Actually, I've gone on the website, and I know some names. But if you want to tell me, if you want to introduce your name so I can get it spelt with the pronunciation correctly, that would be helpful. And maybe tell me what you do outside of the city of Inglewood.
That'd be great. I'm Joe Jefferson. I'm a mayor and representative from District One. I'm also an attorney. I have my own small law practice on Broadway. And I'll be your judge here, starting on the eighth. So, Councilman Olson.
I'm Linda Olson, and council member for District Two. And I'm a professor at the University of Denver and direct an undergraduate leadership studies program.
I'm Amy Martinez. I'm a council member at large. I am a project manager for a creative agency in the Tech Center, in Centennial, actually.
I'm Cheryl Wink. I'm council member at large for Inglewood, and I'm a software architect outside City Hall, City One.
Oh, he already knows you.
I'm Laura Berentone. I'm District Three. And outside of here, I do a lot of council. And outside of the extra council stuff I do, I'm an accountant.
Hello, sir. I'm a fellow Cinderella City mall rat, like yourself. My name is Dave Quest. I'm with District Four, and I'm the Chief Compliance Officer for Native Roots, Colorado.
Okay, great.
I'm Rita Russell, Mayor Pro Tem, also council member at large. And I'm retired. And so this is my number-one job right now.
Okay. Some of the best council members ever are retired. That's how it is. How it is. Okay, so we're going to spend about maybe two hours or so in this presentation. I hope it doesn't exhaust you too much. If you need to take a break, Mayor, I'll leave it to you to decide that we're going to take a little break. I would love questions along the way, if they're very focused and they're fairly simple. Otherwise, we can talk offline or after the meeting, or hold them till the end of the meeting. You have my card, and you're free to call me, no expense. Just call me up if you have a question that you didn't want to share publicly, and be happy to take those calls. Okay? Let's roll. We're going to go tonight to talk, from the top down, from the ethosphere all the way down to the ground, about these kinds of things. We're going to talk about city council's product, what it is that we do as cities. I mean, it's a little basic. You probably already know it. A lot of what I'm going to tell you, you might already know. But you may not awaken to the fact that it fits so perfectly into what it is we do. So we're going to talk about the city council's product. We're going to talk about the main reasons that we have dysfunction in government, and in particular with council meetings and with council members themselves. We're going to talk about effective meetings and effective council members, and we're going to touch upon rules of order and why I believe they're incredibly important for effective government. Let's talk about the product, okay? There is a product associated with local government. And if you don't already know this, you'll figure it out. There are all these kinds of things out there in the world called corporations, okay? And we don't necessarily, as government, think of ourselves as a corporation. But in fact, we are. We are what is known as a municipal corporation. You know this already. We have a purpose in life to serve, and we have rules by which we serve that purpose. And it's important to recognize that we're really not that much different than private government, private corporations. In a private corporation, you have your board of directors. You have a CEO who runs your corporation. You'll have staff members who work, and you have shareholders who take in what would be the profit and make direction, hopefully to the CEO and up the chain. No different than local government, and what they're doing is they're trying to produce profit. We know that. Many of us work for those kinds of organizations. Government has kind of a correlation to that. Although we are government, and we are a public entity, a public corporation, a municipal government in this instance, we have a city council, which is the board of directors. There really is no difference. Okay? We have a city manager who is really no different than your CEO. And you have staff members, and instead of shareholders, you'll have citizens that you're responsible to. And ultimately, what we're producing is a product that is the health and the safety and the welfare of our community. We are not profit motivated. We differ from private corporations in that way. But we are still producing something for our citizens. It is still our obligation, our purpose in life, to use our hierarchy of our power here to produce something. And I want to focus upon the fact that we have a city council that's after this health, safety, and welfare. It is a product that we have to deliver to the public. It is our obligation to deliver that product. But we're very, very special, okay? We're delivering this product, okay, with a price attached to it, to the public. And that price are the taxes, the taxes that our citizens pay to us. And in fact, it's seen as, by our citizens oftentimes, as kind of a forced payment. They have to do it, okay? They're not walking into a store. They can't shop elsewhere for that particular service. They've got to pay the tax no matter what. And in many instances, they do not get the benefit. They don't even see the benefit. They may not use the benefit. They may not use the service that you're providing with their taxes. And they can't go anywhere else. They can't say, "I don't like Inglewood. I'm going to go find somebody else to provide me that service." They can't do it. And because of that, they tend to be very, very critical consumers of our product, because they can't go anywhere else, and they feel like they're being, if you will, extorted for the taxes they're being paid, and they expect us to perform better. It's just a fact of life. Unlike your ability to go into a different cookie store and buy cookies because the other cookie store doesn't serve you well, you don't have that option with government. And that makes citizens a little cranky, if you will. So where is it that our product is delivered, from a city council perspective? Where is it that our product is delivered to our citizens? And where are we judged with regard to whether they're getting the value for their taxes? Okay? Where is that? And where does that lie? For city council members, it lies in the meeting. It lies in what you do in front of your citizens on Monday night, or whatever night you might happen to work. That's where you're judged the most. That is where the angriest citizens come from with regard to they're being forced to pay you money to take services from you. They watch you. They see what they get in return for what they're paying. And if they don't feel that they're being treated correctly, you will have some consternation. It is inevitable that that will happen. So it is the public meeting that's important to us. That's why running well, having well-run public meetings, efficient public meetings, is so critically important. And it's not that easy. And I don't care whether you're a large city with a huge amount of meetings, people at your meeting, which, by the way, that's in the Middle East, by the way, a municipal meeting in the Middle East. Now, thank your lucky stars, this is not Inglewood, or Centennial for that matter, okay? But we also do this. And I don't care whether, what kind of meeting we have, we still owe it to the consumers to produce a product that they feel is worth the value they're paying us. And it lies with the city council. And public meetings do this. They demonstrate something to our citizens, time and time again. Every citizen I ever talked to judges us, and they judge us this way, whether we are using their money effectively in representing them as elected officials, or are we wasting their money because we're dysfunctional. I get more commentary by citizens who are angry about their city council, in which the city council conducts their meetings. They sit in the audience, and they shake their heads, "This is what I'm paying for. These are the people that I elected to office. I don't feel well-served. That's disappointing for them. It should be disappointing for you, because that's why you were elected to office." By the way, if I sound like I'm lecturing or talking in that way to you, it's because I'm very passionate about what we do, okay? And seeing effective governments work makes me even more passionate about getting, for us to get it right. So I don't mean to lecture, but also I'm kind of want to finish in two hours. So why should we care about meetings? We care because we need public confidence in our government. They have no place else to go. And if we don't have public confidence in our government, we pay for it. And we pay for it in very dramatic ways. And I've seen it with every government I've represented. I have cities and counties that I represent that no one shows up, that when they run a ballot question, seventy-five, eighty percent yeses come out of it, with very little effort by the government. And I have governments that I represent who have rooms full of angry people. They go across the bore. But the confidence that you can elicit from the public is extremely important to how smoothly your government can run, because we spend a great deal of time trying to appease angry citizens. If we don't have them to start with, if they're happy with our product, we are well ahead of the game. And governments have reputations. You would be surprised. If you sat down with senior-level staff from the front range, for example, and that'd be city attorneys, city managers and the like, and talked about individual cities within the front range, you will find out that they have reputations. You'll quickly find out they have reputations. That reputation is actually really important to you, because it does a lot of things for you. One, it creates people who want to work for you or not work for you. And that's a very common thing that we have as city attorneys. When a job becomes available in a city, we talk amongst ourselves on whether we would ever want that job, or whether that would be a hot commodity. That's someplace we always want to go to. Because we know from reputation whether that government is effective or not, is going to be in a place where we want to park our rear ends for that many hours a day, week, and month, and years, and we also know that's, those that we need to avoid. Your reputation hits on the employment level. It hits on the development level. It happens this way. We have a reputation in one of our communities of being extremely business-friendly and easy to work with, and we process permits for development extremely quickly. So the attorneys who represent these particular individuals who are developing tell me about our reputation all the time. Your property and your community is worth more to us, because we can process our permits faster and easier with more confidence on the outcome. That reputation generates higher values within the community, because they're willing to pay more to be in that community. Reputation is extremely important. Don't ask me about your reputation, okay? That's not what I'm here for. I can tell you that others surrounding you have some poor and some good reputations. Cities have reputations. And your citizens know that, too, because they see other cities operate. And they come from other cities, which is a remarkable amount of information I get from citizens coming into my communities and saying, "This isn't the way it was in this city, my old city. You guys are really messed up." Or, "You guys rock it." They all have reputations. And we have to be important. We have to pay attention to that. We all know this. We sit through meetings all the time. These are actually city attorneys. We sit through cities' meetings all the time. And what's important about that is whether it's this kind of meeting or this kind of meeting, we have to do it right every time, okay? And I don't care if people sleep, and I really don't care if citizens scream, as long as what the city council's doing is effective. This is going to happen. You can't avoid this. It happens in every city. But what you have to know about the conducting of a meeting is that you are absolutely in a fishbowl. Absolutely. You would be, I used to interview, when I first started down this road of researching this stuff, I would talk with citizens about their experience, and they would tell me what they thought of the city council. And what I learned from this interviewing process is they watch everything you do, every body movement, everything you say, they watch, and they judge you all the time. You are on a fishbowl in front of your people when you provide the product to them. And you have to be aware of that fishbowl all the time. So not only do we want to have good, effective, and efficient products that we're putting out in the public, we have to be aware at all times that that reflects back on our reputation and what our citizens think of us. Little side story. The city of Centennial was going to ban retail dog sales within the community, so that if you were a pet store, you couldn't buy a dog, a puppy. And they were going to do so, they thought, because by curtailing the retail sales of puppies, they would be hindering, if not advancing, the demise of puppy mills. A laudable goal, many would say. We launched this idea out of the public and held public meetings on it. We filled the council chambers, okay? And we had overflow room. We filled the overflow room, okay, of people who were on all sides of the issue. And we heard hours and hours of testimony of why we were stupid and why we were awesome, okay? You name it. Ultimately, we decided not to do that. We were convinced that it wouldn't really impact the issue of puppy mills. Many cities have done so. It's a very, very difficult issue to address. But here's what I learned by talking with people leaving the room. Here's what they said in a nutshell. "I may not like the city council's decision. I may not agree with it, but I wouldn't want to do that job that saved my life. They have a tough job, and I understand where they're coming from, and they listen to me, and I appreciate that." That's what you want. That's that sweet spot in government where you know, you're not going to please everybody in government. You're just not going to. You're citizens. You can't do it. It's impossible. But what you want them to do is feel that you were effective with their tax money. And that's a true story. And it's interesting to have people angry but pleased at the same time. At least they listen. At least they did it right. And we set out, and we put the effort in to do it right. So let's now segue into dysfunction. Why do governments, what is it about governments in our city councils across the state, what makes them dysfunctional, or conversely, successful? And it comes down to this in my observation. We have a lack of professionalism and courtesy that comes out of some of these dysfunctional governments. When you sit through their meetings and you watch them, you realize they're just not a professional group, and they're not nice to each other, for whatever reason, okay? They're also not nice to the public, for whatever reason. And there is a lack of member equity. The city council members don't have equity. Some seem to be favored, some are not. Some speak and some don't. Some are angry and some are engaged. There's not good equity among our council members who are representing us. And we have a lack of the right leadership. And we'll talk about this, okay? What is it about leadership that makes a difference? It makes a critical difference, the kind of leader that you have with you at the dais. And we have a lack of member participation, which leads to dysfunction, many, many times. This is the bunch of quiet people sitting in the room on a very important issue, okay? Dysfunction. Dysfunction. It's not representing their constituency. We also have dysfunction coming out of a lack of rules. Communities invite me in, they say, "We want you to help us. Analyze our city and tell us why we seem to have problems." And sometimes it's because they have no rules whatsoever. Or they have rules, they don't use them, or don't know about them, or only a few of them know the rules, and the rest don't. And then that goes backward equity, because by knowledge reaps power. And so I go in, and I find out that rules and rule knowledge and rule use may be a means by which they can take a step towards greater efficiency. But among all of these, among all of these, the most dysfunctional governments I've ever observed or ever worked with is this one. It's this idea of professionalism and courtesy. And I understand now, better than I ever have in my career, what comes, what comes or what breeds this lack of professionalism and courtesy. The greatest source of this dysfunction is this. It's the ego of council members, okay? And sometimes staff, okay? And sometimes staff, and sometimes citizens. It's not reserved to you. But we're talking to you, so we're going to talk about ego associated with council. And it's not ego as we know it, this idea that we feel ourselves important. We all do, okay? We wouldn't be able to get out of bed in the morning if we didn't have ego, okay? It's this inflated sense of ego, and how that interacts with a council, how that plays into the fact that we're providing a public service, okay, to our citizens. How does that, how does that work? And there's a lot of writing in the area of leadership, and this is just one of the more common expressions that we see. But it is so true, the fact that what you're asked to do as a council member has nothing to do about you. It ain't about you. It's about your citizens. It's about the fact that you stepped out there and did this. You went out there into the public eye. You said, "I want you to elect me." To serve you is what you told them. "I can't believe if you told them anything else." You ran on a platform, and it was, "I want to represent you." In many cases, "I want to allow you to watch Monday Night Football, and I'll take care of your problems," okay? This is what you told these folks who voted for you, okay? You didn't say, "Hey, look, I've got this great agenda that I want to run. I want to make myself feel good about myself." You didn't do that. You said, "I'm here for you. And trust me, I will take care of your interests and listen to you and represent you to the best of my ability, and I will be part of a team in making that happen." That's an incredibly important part that we'll get to, okay? This is what you did, okay? So if you're not doing that today, then we have a problem, perhaps, okay? An ego is often demonstrated in these ways, okay? It's people who tell me they want to win an issue. I recently had a council member tell me with regard to an issue of whether we should move a town meeting. It was a district or ward meeting. And we anticipated, because of the issues that were being presented, that we would be exhausting the size of the room. And because we liked this library space, we didn't want the library grumpy with us because they would shut us down, we needed to move it to the Chamber of Commerce, which is a much larger space, was going to have that many people. Two council members in that district. One of them says, "I think it's a great idea to move it. I think we should." And she went to the other council member and said, "I think we need to move our meeting." And the other council member said, "No, we're not moving the meeting. But don't you understand? We'll have too many people, and the library will kick us out, and we'll tell everybody to go home, and that's not serving the public. I'm not going to do it." When asked offline why that person was opposed to moving the meeting, the answer was, "I'm not going to let the other council member win this one. I'm not going to let them win." That is not service of the public. That is service of ego. So winning an issue, no matter what it happens to be, is oftentimes an expression of ego in government. If you're out there to pay back somebody for something they've done to you or for revenge, that's ego talking. That has nothing to do with public service, serving your elected, your people who elected you. If you're opposing an issue or supporting an issue on purely political or social differences, "I'm voting that way because I'm a Democrat," or "Republican," or whatever it happens to be, that not, in and of itself, is going to be service of the public. Or if I'm out there to make sure that I feel good about myself, this is all about me. This is all about making sure that when I go home, I happen to be successful, because I'm a council member, and that was my issue, right? It goes back to winning. But ego is not demonstrated by council members who But ego is not demonstrated by council members who can honestly say that the decisions they made were made for their constituents. Truly, I voted in favor of the interest of my constituents like I told them I would. I'm somewhat indifferent about the outcome to some extent. Now, obviously, you have to support the position that you're in. But if you can honestly say that the outcome, my decision in this particular issue was for my constituents and it wasn't wrapped up in any other issue, you're, you should be confident that you're not playing an ego card with regard to representing the public. You're doing what you need to do because this ego gets really sideways with council, okay? So why is there this conflict between our ego and public office and our public representation? Why is it a battle, if you will? It goes this way. Is that when, in your mind and into us who watch you, the ego appears this way when you have it. You're going to win this issue. This is how you're gonna flex your muscle. You're gonna accomplish this for you, okay? And it appears this ugly, if you will. And what you really are is this. You really should know that as a single individual council member, you have no power whatsoever. You can't sign a contract. You couldn't make anything happen if your life depended on it. Unless you were delegated that authority, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But you are nothing with regard to power in a city. Your power comes from being a majority of the city council. This is where you're the most powerful as government, okay? If you're sitting out here, this is nothing. This is just somebody who's representing a bunch of people. But once you get on the majority side, okay, you get much more powerful. And the reason why being on city council and having a huge ego is a problem is because these two things aren't equal. Thinking you're powerful and being powerful are not the same. You need to work cooperatively to make it happen. And also, this doesn't work. When you've got a bunch of city council members sitting around trying to flex their ego and trying to win an issue, you're gonna get nowhere because they have to work together. It's critical that they work together to accomplish something for their taxpayers. If you don't recognize that, you're probably not paying attention to what it is you're supposed to be doing as a council member. You know, if you don't realize this is a collaborative operation that we're in. I've got to talk to my fellow council members. I've got to effectively advocate for my particular position so that my citizens are served. Otherwise, we're wasting, we're wasting money. We're wasting time. You're wasting my time. I have to sit there and watch all of this as a city attorney, okay? It's not pretty. It's not pretty for anybody and I'm missing Monday Night Football, which might be a really important football game. So what I want to impress upon you is that if you're in it for the ego, you probably think, need to think about it. If you're not and you're thinking, "Man, I'm, I'm right on the right side of what Bob's talking about. I'm always working for my citizens and I really don't have a dog in that race." Good for you. Good for you. But when I see dysfunction in government, it's oftentimes ego demonstrated by one or most, most or many of the city council members. Not a pretty sight. Let's move on to the effective meeting, okay? This is what we need to do as a council to make sure that we're going to be giving you a product back to our citizens that they respect, that they think's worthy of the money that we pay. We define it in all sorts of ways. You could probably sit down and throw out about 10, 15 other things that people would say about what makes for an effective meeting. You know, they're short. That might be something somebody would say. That we are all unanimous in our decisions, okay? That we made one good decision, do a decision tonight. You know, there's a variety of different ways that people might characterize a successful or effective meeting. I will tell you as a segue, one of the, if you like duration as a judge, I probably have been in the fastest city council meeting. And when I was sitting as a city attorney in Arvada, Colorado, our mayor was a monster Bronco, not monster Raiders fan. And there was a Monday Night Football game. And we came and sat down, called the meeting to order. They took role and immediately says, "Do I have a motion?" Motion was, "I move to adjourn." "Do I have a second?" They had a second. They voted, they were out of there so they can go home and watch Monday Night Football. Somebody told me it was a minute and 19 seconds before we got out of there. Short meeting. Successful? Maybe so. Maybe so. Maybe not for the citizens who came to make sure that their issues were taken care of, but they got to go home and watch Monday Night Football. So our effective meeting looks like this. What we're trying to do is accomplish two sets of goals. We have outward goals and we have inward goals and let's talk about them. They all stem from the fact that we're in this fishbowl and our citizens are watching us, okay? The outward, the inward goals are how we internally operate as a council with each other. And what it is we're trying to accomplish as a city council. And then the outward is what our citizens are hoping we accomplish for them. And let's talk about what makes for the efficiencies of these two different kinds of views. Inwardly, we wanna make sure what a successful meeting is for me as an observer and as a taxpayer also, we wanna make sure that all the council members inwardly have an equal opportunity, a fair opportunity to be heard. That's important. If you're never told that you can speak, you'd be pretty irate as a council member, okay? Especially if others have, have an unequal position over you. You wanna make sure that you were felt and heard and understood when you did speak. That people listened to you. That your council members took, took your, your issues, took your comments to heart. They may not agree with you, but you want to be heard and understood. And we wanna make sure that we get all the issues, the relevant ones addressed. We don't wanna leave out a bunch of threads. The citizens watch this stuff too, either way. We don't wanna leave relevant issues unaddressed. And we don't wanna run down rabbit holes where we're spending all of our time talking about things that are not relevant, okay? It frustrates you no end, or it should, that you're wasting your time on things that aren't relevant, that's not on the agenda, okay? It also frustrates your public. And you want to make sure that you, that everyone at the, at the dais was respected. These are the things for inwardly looking meeting that we want to make sure as council members that we're doing to be effective. And inwardly, we wanna make sure that what we, what comes out of our mouth or out of our voting is going to be clear and that we made a record because five years from now, we're all gonna wanna know what was it that we decided. And we have to make sure that we have a defensible record, defensible decision that we can defend in applicable law and reason, okay? These are what, things that we want. When I talk to council members, they say, "This would be success for me if we can do this kind of stuff," okay? So what are the citizens who are watching us in this fishbowl? What are they looking for us to have done? It's exactly the same. It's exactly the same. Your citizens want to make sure that they had a fair opportunity to be heard as appropriate because they don't always have a chance to reach the microphone. But when they do, they wanna make sure that they had the fair opportunity. And they wanna know that you listen to them. They desperately want that. As in the explanation about the puppy mill story, they just wanna be heard and they wanna be listened to in an effective way. And they wanna make sure that you're not wasting their time on irrelevant issues. And you're not running around in rabbit holes. Nothing frustrates them more to not, they have a hard enough time watching what you do and keeping up with you, let alone you running down rabbit holes that they have no idea where they are. And they want to be respected. You do this for them, you're doing it for you and everything's successful as a meeting. And they also want the same kind of things when it comes to the decision. Because invariably, they ask you what you did and you wanna make sure that you're not wasting their money by doing things that you can't support. But importantly in our meeting, when this meeting happens, we don't necessarily, don't want these things, okay? We don't wanna make sure that everyone voted the same. I'm gonna speak to that. We don't want everybody leaving happy. That's not our goal. It may happen, right? But that's not what makes a good meeting is that everybody's happy. You're never gonna please everybody and you wanna make, no, you're not gonna get in a situation where everybody got what they wanted. That's just going to be unreasonable and never accomplished. And you're never gonna get love. That's just the way it works, okay? Some citizens will be happy with you some of the time and others will not. And that goes back and forth all the time. That's called being a council member, okay? I did have a very awesome council member in my career who, who actually broke down in my office crying because she said, "Last night's meeting was terrible." And I asked her why and she goes, "I didn't feel any love." That's not what it's all about. You're taking care of the public's interest. You're making sure that they're going to be healthy and safe, okay? It's not about them loving you. So I learned a lot by talking to council members. But let's talk about unanimity in voting, okay? If you think that everyone voting the same is a success, let's, let's kind of lay that proposition, which some council members, perhaps not you, feel that's, that's success. When you run 9090 or 7070, 5050, that shows that you're successful. That is not true. Not true in my observation, okay? There is value in discord as long as it's respectful, okay? Here's how it works. You don't want to sit there with, with what we call snakes in the grass. It's the affectionate name I give those council members who don't say anything and then vote. Oftentimes, out of the majority. No. Why? Why? You know, and when, before we had Bob's Rules in one of my communities, I had this following question that said, "I want you to explain why it is you voted no." And everyone had voted. Matter was done. And the person said, "Well, here's why." And they explained why they voted no. And the person who asked the question goes, "I wish you had told me that because that was relevant to me and now I agree with you and I want to vote no." But we're done. We're done. As Bob's Rules will tell us, we have to go back through an elaborate process to fix that staffoo. But you owe it to the other members of the city council to express your viewpoints. It's part of being a representative government. You were elected to represent people. Represent them. Give your reasons why. And one of the most effective executive teams I've been involved in, in government, was a council member who, not council member, a city manager who mandated from the executive team that there be dissenting views on any issue we were talking about. He wanted to know, "Give me why we're stupid. Give me why we're gonna make a mistake. Be the devil's advocate." And you can do that effectively too as a council member. And perhaps it's even in your obligation to make sure that you express yourself even when you disagree, especially when you disagree because you owe it to the other members to give that, that feedback. And you owe it to the citizens for their voice to be heard through you. Snakes in the grass are not effective. Let's move on to the effective people, okay? These are the, these are the mayor and the city council members. If you're in another government, it's gonna be any number of other titles. If you're a Board of Adjustment or a Planning and Zoning Commission, there'll be chair people when we talk about mayor. But let's talk about mayors and city council members. And what makes these people effective in this kind of, this kind of sphere of an effective meeting that we're talking about? We go back to the key reasons for dysfunction. Some of them go straight to the issue of a council member being effective. What is it about you as an individual council member that makes you effective? One, we've talked about ego, which is the overriding concern that we have in just about everything we do. But let's talk about how we might address these other dysfunction issues by things that, that you might be, you might improve by knowing about or thinking about or confirming that you're doing them right. Let's start with the mayor because we love beating up on mayors, right? It's always my favorite thing. By the way, there is a very effective mayoral summit that's handled by CML every year, the trained mayors. It's extremely well attended. So I know you're switching out. So it might be a good time that if you have a new mayor on board and it coincides with that meeting, to send them to that training summit because they get some really good feedback on how it, how it can be very effective, to be tricks that can be very effective for mayors. The role of the mayor, okay? When we're talking about an effective mayor, here's what we're looking for. We're looking primarily for leadership from our mayor, okay? And leadership is not getting his or her way. That's not what we talk about when we talk about leadership. Leadership is preparing what we call fertile ground. And I, I thank a mayor that I worked with long ago who created this idea of fertile ground. As he told me, "It's not my job to impose the will on my city council. It's my job to make sure they get heard. It's my job to make sure that I put out some dirt for them that's very rich and make sure that they can grow product out of that, that soil that they're all happy about. If I do the fertile ground, then I've accomplished my purpose." It's not about me or my ego of being the, the mayor of the city, which we all relatively know mayors are pretty much just council members. And they have to put their ego away. It's never gonna be about them. They have got to be the number one person on council who gets this ego issue. That I'm here to make fertile ground and it's not about me. It's not about my way. They can have their way. They can have their opinion and they should express it, as we'll talk about. But they also have to be the most prepared member at the table. If they're not, they can't lead. And when I mean most prepared, that they've read through the packet, they know where we're going. They, they understand all the issues that might come up on the particular topics that we're gonna have on the agenda. And they know generally where they need to create the soil and move the soil around so that the answers can be, come out, can come out of the rest of the city council. That's what I'm talking about, being prepared, okay? Oftentimes, it requires the mayor, since they're chairing the meeting, to sit down with executive staff and talk about the agenda. What do we foresee as being the issues here? Where do you think our council might go? What have you done, staff, with regard to research to figure out what issues might pop up and cause those problems? And they also have to be the most knowledgeable with regard to the rules and the requirements of your operation. If you have a problem in conducting business, you'll turn to the mayor and say, "What are we supposed to do next? What's the vote requirement?" Okay? You need to have that kind of prepared person to lead you. Lead you in an effective way for the fertile ground. And recognize secondarily that the role of the mayor is a member of the body. They get to vote in most cities and I assume so here, okay? And so that mayor also has an opinion that they can offer in. Some of the things that we see with mayors in effective government is what we call effective disentanglement. Like this is my phrase. It's trademarked. Do you see a little T M up there? No, I'm just kidding. It's effective disentanglement, okay? They've gotta be aware of the fact that it's inevitable in some governments that you're gonna have cliques and clusters of people. There's gonna be people who just meld with each other politically, if you will, at the local level that can exist. The mayor must avoid those cliques and clusters of people. They do not want to be bonded with them because that's going to be defeating of their ability to create fertile soil. They need to stay away from them. And any mayor who's worth their weight will recognize the fact that they need to be outside of what they would call a clique on the city council. Those that do get into the clique find their city councils extremely dysfunctional because they end up becoming the enemy of some on the council. And there has to be value of mayoral opinion, okay? And that is that the council, that the mayor is a council member and they do have an opinion. So many mayors have undertaken this, what I call last to speak rule. They always create their fertile ground. They make sure that the, the issue's discussed. Only until everybody's exhausted with regard to discussion do they come in and they're the last to speak. But they do have an opinion, okay? Some of many mayors believe that they should be the first to speak. And usually when I ask them, "What is the reason why you feel you should be first to speak?" Their answer invariably is, "I'm their leader and they're looking to me for where we're supposed to go. And if they don't go in my direction, we're not very successful, are we? So I better tell them where we're supposed to go." Is that not ego? Is that not the essence of ego? You need to be aware of that as a mayor and always think about whether or not you're being fair to your constituency. And that constituency being the other council members. Are you giving them fair equity at the, at the dais, okay? There is a problem with what I call information is power, okay? By being a leader, okay? You need to be, you need to show leadership by subject matter knowledge. You need to know a little bit about what the heck's going on because without that knowledge, you can't really lead. And you also have to have, and you oftentimes will have, historical leadership knowledge. You'll know about where we were in the past. Mayors are oftentimes kind of longer in the tooth council members. They've been here a while. And when they are, they have this information is power problem because they know more than everybody else. And they tend to wanna step out and say, "We don't need to talk about this. You don't understand. I already know this issue. I've gone through it 10 years ago. We've had this issue 10 times already. We're gonna come out on this answer A. So let's skip to the chase and go to the answer A." You have got to be careful of that as a mayor. Because quite frankly, I've never seen two issues necessarily come out the same way over time. It always is good to bring the issue back and talk about it again. Historical knowledge is important. It might be good for the mayor to say, "We've handled this thing five times before and each time this issue's come up and each time the council's at that time, based upon the information we had, felt this way." It may or may not be the truth today. Offering up that historical knowledge in a non-threatening, non-directing way is what mayors should do. Now you as a council member understand, "Yeah, we have kicked the tires on this issue for a long time." And I kinda feel the same way. I'm gonna come out the same way today, but I was given the opportunity. I was not told by the mayor, "Because we've already done it this way, we will do it this way today." That's not fair and that's not good leadership by a mayor. So mayors should always be aware of these kinds of issues that this fertile soil is really the success of a mayor, okay? Council members. What will make you successful? The three Ps are number one. I mean, this is what I learned teaching law school. You know, you gotta be this way all the time. You have to be prepared, okay? You know your rules, okay? You've looked at the topics on the agenda. You've reviewed the packet. You don't think for a minute the staff. And oftentimes, citizens know when you're not prepared. We actually, it's a running joke for staff members. We can tell because oftentimes, the council member will ask a question that's answered on the first page of the staff report. And it's like, "Wow, talk about not reading your packet. It was right there in front of you." We know. We know, okay? So being prepared actually is what your citizens elect you to do. To represent them on the issue. To know the issues. To know what's in the packet. To be able to, with knowledge, express your constituents' views on the particular issue, okay? express your constituents' views on the particular issue, okay? Knowing your role, I want to touch upon that. We're going to touch at length about the roles of council members, but there are different roles that you have to understand sitting in your chair. If you don't get this, you can't represent the citizens. We'll talk more about that. You also have to participate, you know? When you say here on the microphone, that means you're here. It means you're ready to go. It means you're going to participate. You're not going to sit there quietly and even if you're unprepared, you still owe it to pay attention and listen and ask questions to supplement your knowledge so you're ready to vote. That's the obligation you have as a council member. That's why you asked to be elected. And you have to be professional. And this goes back to the issue of courtesy and professionalism, okay? You know why you're there. You know that the issue is the problem that you're solving. You're not there for you and you're not, it's not about the people. The fact that I may disagree with you, I can do so in a very, oops, okay, we're done here. The fact that I may disagree even with the mayor is actually healthy and if I can do it in a respectful way and he understands what I'm talking about and why I feel the way I do, it might convince him, it might not, but he can understand me in a very earnest way and give me his opinion and I may understand him. But we all walk away saying, we beat the issue. We did not beat up the people, okay? Again, ego rises up in professionalism. If you're not ego-driven, you can be very, very professional and you leave those issues at the front, at the door. You do not bring in there a bunch of personal issues that you're trying to get vendettas against. These effective council member things are really important. I see them fester up all the time and the people who are successful do this kind of stuff, okay? Effective council member and the roles are important. And I'm sure you've had this training and you've probably heard about it at CML 50 million times to Sunday, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on it. But there are roles that council members play. I like the illustration of everybody plays a different position on the field. You're not expected to be the catcher and the right fielder. You can't do both. You're given a position on the field of playing, you need to play that position. For you as a council member, you are the policymakers, okay? You are not the people filling potholes. There is a role to be played filling potholes. It's called administrative. You are not the person out filling the potholes. Rarely if ever will you engage in what we call true administrative role. That is for your city manager and for the city manager's staff. But you get actively involved in both legislative action and quasi judicial action. You should know this stuff by the back of your hand and if you don't, it's probably most important for you to get up to speed on those issues. When you are acting legislatively, you're making laws, okay? You're passing laws. You're passing a new dog leash law. We're going to make all leashes six feet in the city. That's called legislative action, making laws. When you act quasi judicially, you're actually acting much like a judge. You're deciding somebody's legal rights. They've applied for a land use matter. They've applied for a rezoning. They've submitted an application to the city and they have a legal right to a hearing and to be heard and notice. They have certain legal rights. And if you don't know these roles that you play and you change your hat out all the time, that's because they're council members. You work with the state government, you're either a legislator or a judge or you're the, in the governor's office, but in government, here in government, you switch your hats out all the time. You need to know those roles because the legal requirements that attach to them are important for you to understand. We're not going to go into it tonight, but that's part of knowing your role in the council. These are the two that hit you. These are the two that you have to be aware of where you are at all times. Let's take a little minute to kind of change and understand how you're, knowing your role and knowing what you're supposed to do can or cannot get you in trouble as a council member. This is kind of important one-on-one stuff for council members. If you've not talked about it before, you should talk about it. And that is whether or not you are within the scope of what you're commissioned to do as a council member. This is fun stuff. This is the stuff that we write law review articles over about the really interesting fact patterns of how city council members and government body members get themselves in trouble over doing things that are what we call outside the scope of what you were asked to do. You have a role in that playing field. If you go and play another position, you may find that you're not in your scope of what you were hired to do. That has legal consequences for you that are really important. Knowing that, knowing this stuff makes you a better council member because you'll stay on your course. If you're in the scope of what you're supposed to do, doing your legislative duties, doing your quasi judicial duties, not going to, going to a field of where you're supposed to be, you get generally immunity from claims. People can't sue you and if they do sue you, they're not going to be successful. You're doing what you're supposed to do. And as council members, you're very powerful when you're in your scope to resist anything that comes your way. You should sleep well at night, I call that. You have the right of defense by the city and they have an obligation to pay your damages should you lose if you were in the scope of what you're supposed to do. That's why it's always important for you to know whether or not you're acting within your role or outside your role. If you're outside the scope, you don't get immunity. You're what we call personally liable. Personally liable means your house, your car, kid's big wheel, okay? The reigning case on out of scope for government officials is a person, not a city council member, was a senior level staff person who was operating under a court order and they had an obligation to do something and they did more than they were supposed to do. And the court said, you're outside your scope. Government doesn't have to defend you and your house is at risk, your kid's big wheel is at risk. What he did was he exercised the authority, he has authority, he thought he had to have a building torn down, which the court said, yes, tear that building down, it's a nuisance. But he said, you know, that sheds a nuisance too. Plow that down. Wasn't in the court order. He was, he went outside his scope. And because of that, the court hung him out to dry. And the city would not stand behind him in that situation, which the city has a right to do. The city does not have to provide you any defense if you're outside your scopes. And you always want to make sure as a council member, you're walking the right line. Now, being in or out of scope, you have immunity under one circumstance. And that is what I mentioned early on, is that why you should listen to your city attorney and not me. It's because if you're listening to your city's legal counsel, if you follow your city's legal counsel advice, even if it's wrong and even if you're out of your scope, you're immune. Great power for you to know. The only thing you need to know about this really powerful thing about listening to your lawyer is that there's what we call a reasonable standard. If your lawyer tells you, yeah, it's okay to kill the mayor, go for it. And you know...
She has said that often.
Don't do it.
Off the record, I think.
Off the record. And you know full well that that's not permitted. If there's, if any layperson would look at the situation and say, that's bad legal advice, then you're not going to be immune. But nine times out of 10, following your city's legal counsel will immunize you even if you do the wrong thing. That's why I always tell people, follow your legal counsel, don't follow me. Comment out of scope things, because I always get these questions once we talk about scope, is where do you see most of the mistakes coming? I call them these things. I call one of them grabbing the shovel, getting involved in administrative matters, going out there, for example, one of my, one of my clients, the city manager, the town administrator, decided that it was his job to plow the streets with the tractor, with the city's tractor. So he went out there and plowed streets. Unfortunately, he did some serious damage, okay, to some vehicles and he was outside the scope of his employment, outside the scope of his role. He wasn't the snow truck driver. The other one is going out and involving yourself in personnel matters, which is a very common mistake for council members to think that they have in most cities, any authority over the administrative staff below the city manager. So you have to be careful that you know your role with regard to whether you have any say in personnel matters. In many, many, many communities that have charters and home rule cities, they have prohibitions against council members getting involved in personnel matters. They might expressly say you have no authority whatsoever to hire, fire, terminate, suggest supervision or reprimand for any employee. And if you do so, you're outside your scope. And if that employee doesn't like the fact that you dabbled in their lives, if you will, they may have a claim against you. You've got to be careful about grabbing the shovel. It's not your job. Don't do it. Sometimes you get a situation where a council member had no granted authority. They thought that they were authorized to go do something on behalf of the council. They went out and did it and they did have not, they had no authority whatsoever. Pretty rare, but it still happens. Another one is outside the lane, what I call not fanning your lane. This is not an uncommon problem for council members and I had a city hire me to come in and to address the specific issue they had on their city council with regard to having two lawyers and two engineers on the city council. If you are on the city council, you are a council member. You are not the city attorney. You are not the city engineer. And so by inflicting into the council your expert opinion with regard to the law and/or engineering or any other subject you're an expert in, which you probably are, is not your role. And so if council runs down the road following your advice, especially over the advice of the city engineer or the city attorney, you're outside your lane. You shouldn't be doing that. I know it's hard and it's very hard when I brought to you with lawyers, especially on city councils, they just all think they are the experts in the law. And, you know, we always have a come down, come to religious deity meeting at the very beginning when I do have lawyers, I sit down, I said, we understand each other here, right? You are an employment attorney. You know nothing about municipal law. And if you want me to prove that, let's play 10 questions. And I don't do it this way, right? But I play this thing where they understand, yes, I will defer to you. However, I always make my lawyers liaisons to my legal department. So if I have an issue I want to talk to a city council about, I go to them first, just so they're in the know. And if they want to go out and research it, they can. I did have, as a city attorney in a front range city here, my, one of my city council members was an extremely experienced lawyer, not in municipal law, but his wife was probably one of the reigning gurus in municipal law. So I had to deal with the fact he'd roll over in the middle of the night and say, honey, what do you think about this?
Oh, no.
And I got this every week. My wife says. But he understood his position.
Mr. Ryan, do you mind if we took five? I think I just need a quick bio break. We just finished our council holiday dinner, so I think...
Not a problem.
Am I the only one or is everybody, need five? Okay, let's take five.
That's right. Yeah, so far, so good.
We really appreciate you coming out.
Sure.
It's the one exhausting.
Yeah, don't drag Steve Boe back. Another one.
We're all here.
It's a wonderful schedule today.
Basically from this month, we're debating with enough.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know.
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 It doesn't seem this, it just goes, we are everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. My phone is still on silent from work today.
Oh, good reason.
So are we having our policy discussion?
Exactly. Everything says no services. You gotta find a head.
That we missed last week? I don't know.
What was that, eight, thirteenth, was that, that meeting?
I wish these were on wheels. I could spin around.
December eleventh study session?
Yeah, that one.
Oh, right. Council holidays. Talk to the...
Yeah, we're sorry. That blew me off. Sweater vest.
Okay, if I can get folks to take their seats, we're gonna start here in just a second. Yeah, we're off. Nice. I'd love to play hooky, though. You can invite me back on the night that we have.
I'll call this meeting back to order.
Okay. Let's pick up where we left off. We're rolling really well on time, so this is good. Another thing that you need to know is a council member, to make sure you stay in your role and do what you're supposed to do, is this idea of public trust and fiduciary duty. You probably already know about this, but when you got sworn in, you said you'd uphold the laws and obey the rules and regulations of the city, and that you're going to defend the public trust. And this is an important thing, because there are provisions in our state law that allow the district attorney to prosecute you if you're not furthering the public trust, if you're working on behalf of your own interest, or if you're harming the fiduciary interests of the community. Ways in which you do that is, for example, divulging confidential information that you received as a city council member in a way in which it harms the city's interest. The best example that was prosecuted, although it was settled, is a city council member who used information given to her with regard to the value of property, that they were, the city community was selling, and divulging that to the owner of the property, who immediately jacked up the price to the amount that the city was willing to pay, in kind of a coercive way to basically profit off of the city's dole with regard to the dealings on the property. That's an extreme example. You know not to do that, and if you do do that, you get prosecuted. But the idea here is you must know that you're serving the public trust, and you do not get to serve your own interest, kind of an important corollary to everything we've talked about. Another thing that you have to stay in your lane on and stay in your roles in is this ex parte communication, which I understand that you all follow here. And the rule in ex parte communications is no, you don't do it. If you don't know what that is, it's basically getting involved in situations, and ex parte communications are in quasi judicial matters only. These are the land use applications, the individuals who have applied, for example, to your community who want you to decide their individual legal rights. When you have that kind of matter before you, you are not to engage in discussions or communications outside of the public hearing process, outside of the room in which you're going to have the hearing, in which you've noticed, everyone, we're going to meet on this date and time, we're going to hear testimony about this particular application. If you're engaging in communications outside of that hearing room, once that application has been submitted to the community, you're engaging what's called ex parte communications. The best way to think about it is this: if you're involved in a divorce with a spouse, is it fair for your spouse to go and have dinner with the judge the night before a hearing on whether or not you'll get through divorce, and who will get the kids? The answer has clearly got to be no. That is unfair to me for my spouse to talk with the judge outside of the hearing. I should be in the room when that stuff's talked about. That's ex parte communication. It's actually, we can get into the nitty-gritty of the due process clause and all this, but it's where it comes from. Individuals who apply to you for a permit or some kind of action that's quasi judicial have a right to a fair, neutral, and impartial tribunal. It means you sit there in the meeting room, not having decided the issue, pretty much ignorant about all the facts of the situation. And you've agreed, as the judge, as one of the judges, to only listen to the testimony given to you in the hearing, in front of everybody who has an interest. And then you'll make a decision. You're not coming to the meeting armed with background information or closed-door information about the situation. That's ex parte communications. You are not to engage in those, and if you do so, you put your community at risk of being an unfair, due process, violating community. So always be understanding that ex parte communications are generally a no and is part of your obligation in quasi judicial roles. Not legislative, right? If you're legislatively acting, you're passing laws, you can be biased all day long. You can talk to anybody you want in the grocery store, or at Starbucks. If you're deciding how long a dog leash law, a dog leash should be for all dogs within your city, and you're not acting on an application, it's a legislative matter, and you're not subject to ex parte communications. And you can be wholly biased. You can hate dogs, and still decide.
So maybe we can add a little bit of color to this, you know, example perhaps of a quasi judicial matter zoning change whereby a public hearing is required, and that's this tribunal that describes whereby all the testimony and all information should be where you should be making your decision. And once that public hearing is sort of set, you know, communications post that would be very clearly sort of ex parte. And so I think sometimes, you know, drawing the line between what's quasi judicial and legislative might be a little bit of a challenge early on, because we do have public hearings for, you know, non, you know, quasi judicial matters sometimes when we're trying to gather sort of public feedback.
Absolutely true. And that does confuse the issue in many communities where you do provide public input or public hearing with regard to legislative matters, like many cities do. You want to hear from your constituents. But U.S. council members must know those differ from your quasi judicial role, and knowing your role helps keep you on the straight and narrow. Let's segue a little bit here. We're talking about the key element, or a key element of what makes you an effective council member or an effective mayor. There's one. There's one that helps combat a lot of what we've talked about tonight, about even being unprepared. And that is respect. This is the one that seems to allay citizens' angst with government, more so than anything else. It's that issue of the puppy mills, of people saying, "I don't agree with it, but I respect them for making the tough decision." Respect is everything, and you get respect by giving up respect. And it addresses this lack of professionalism that we've talked about. Respect will cloud over, cover over, a great deal of problems in government by having respect. When we talk about respect, we want it at all levels of what we do as government officials, as elected officials. We want it in your council-to-council relationship. You should show respect at all times. You should show respect to your staff, and I have a whole thing, if it gets to the time to talk about staff relationships with council, I have a whole presentation on that. And counsel the public interactions. You should always show respect. Yeah, we're going to have cranky citizens, you might even have cranky council members, but respecting everyone will get you further along than just about anything else you do. Okay? And ways you do this in government is you never make it personal to you. It's not about you. I understand that I'm here for the public, and this is not going to hurt me personally. By listening to you, I can show you respect, and I can listen to you even though I disagree with you. And you can use respect to really subtle one-upping with regard to, especially when you've got your ego reduced, it is really, really effective to show respect to somebody who's not being respectful to you. It is extremely effective way of saying, "I have it under control, I'm listening to you," and you will see them deflate with regard to their level of conflict with you. It is something that we use as lawyers, and I use effectively with very angry citizens, is that I earnestly and with my heart show them respect even though they're dressing me down. And I don't go there with them. I won't dress them down, it's not my job, okay? I listen, okay? Using titles and names. I first started down this road, I did this experiment in this little town that I was representing, who I got hired on as the town attorney, and they told me, "We're having a real problem here, because we have council meetings just blow up. We actually have to adjourn the meeting, we don't get our work done, because it gets so confrontational." So I sat in on a couple of meetings, and I realized part of the problem was the way in this very small town, the citizens related to the board of trustees in that community. It was a situation where they called each other Joe and Jane, because they see each other in the stores and in the bars, and they know them personally. And so there was this personal, personal connection between the issues. It was about the personality and not about the issue. It's the fact that the other day, your dog was loose, and it pooped on my property, and I'm mad at you about it. It was a very personal community. So I had the town board start using titles and names with people. So when Joe came to the microphone, and he's irate, and he's going to rip somebody on this issue, the mayor would say, "Mr. Smith, the floor is yours, we're here to listen to you." And I coupled this with something else I'll teach you in a moment. And Mr. Smith immediately went, "Wow, this is weird. This is respect. It's not about the person, they're going to show me respect." And after a couple of meetings, and it really was a short number of months, we started getting citizens coming up and calling people "board member" and "Mr. and Ms." And the whole thing started deflating, and I thought, "We're on to something here that by showing respect will deflate conflict and take personality out of it." So I'd implore you to use that, and we do it in Centennial. We actually have rules of procedure that don't allow the council members to call anyone, including other council members, by their first name. You must refer to people as Mr. and Ms. council member. And we do that, and it's a point of order, which we'll talk about, to not do so. And that ups the game with regard to the respect in the room. We treat people with respect. And the incredibly valuable thank you, I gotta tell you. Citizens would come up and rip on the council, and after they're done, the mayor said, "I really appreciate you showing up tonight, this is great information for us, and I thank you for taking the time to come down here." You see their shoulders deflate. You see them turn and realize they were listened to. Talk about another technique on making this happen. But it is extremely valuable to thank somebody, honestly, because they are coming down. They miss in Monday Night Football, so are you, but you were elected to do so. They were not, so they're not as happy about it. So the thank you goes a long way. And I actually, in Centennial, have other council members will jump in and back up the mayor. And the mayor goes, "I really appreciate it." And somebody else say, "Yeah, I think your information was really good, thank you." And that person's relationship with the council will change over time. Respecting, respect in effective council members goes like this: you can quiet others' egos by using respect with them. They come off to you with ego, with this win attitude, and you show them respect, and they will deflate. It will help quiet their ego. It also dissipates, as we mentioned, conflict. It really will reduce conflict, it really, really does. And it opens the door for reasonable debate. I've had too many meetings where respect's not shown, and people will yell personally at each other. There's a great video on YouTube of the Detroit City Council yelling obscenities at each other, if you ever want to have some fun. And it's just a complete annihilation of respect between council members, and the whole meeting's worthless. The whole meeting is worthless. No one gets anything other than devaluing what you're giving to the public with regard to the product that you're providing. And respective meetings, within the meetings, what you see is the obvious dissipation of conflict, but it creates more respect. Respect breeds respect, and it demonstrates to the public that there's value for their taxes. If they're listened to you by, listened to you, and they're understood by you, and they're given opportunity to be heard, you will find out that they feel they're getting something back for their taxes. And it creates that confidence in government when you do show people respect. Ways you do that are these. These are all things you know. You know this stuff, you've been told a million times, but it works in government. It works in government to actively listen to the person who's in front of you, which means you're not on your PC playing a game, you're looking them in the eye, you are sitting forward in your chair, okay? You don't talk to other council members. You basically actively listen to that person with your, with your mind and your heart, which is your job anyway, because you're not, you're sitting there on behalf of a great number of people who felt you were worthy to put into the chair. So you owe it to that person to listen to them actively. This is also a rule I tell new council members when they get into office, sometimes it's best to open your eyes, close, open your ears, open your mind, and close your mouth, to listen before you speak. Another story. Body language is a big one. Man, oh man, I see so many citizens take the microphone, and they start explaining something to the council, and the council turns off on them because they don't like the conflict. I've watched this a million times. The council members slide back their chair, and they'll cross their legs, and they'll divert their eyes. And it's a way of showing them disrespect because they're being angry, or they're being obstinate, or they're being loud. That's dangerous. This is far more effective at making sure that they get their point made to you in a calm way than this. I gotta tell you, it works, and you owe it to them to listen. They came down. Do you have a question?
Yeah, there's actually a photographer whose name I don't remember at this moment, who did a series on councils, different councils in their meetings, and focused on their body language. And it was remarkable to see how, I mean, more, much more of this difference in what they were emoting through just their body language and the photo. That was amazing.
And what you see on this kind of body language, especially I see it when council members talk to each other during a presentation by a citizen, here's what the citizen does. And so I'm really upset about the road conditions in front of my house, and they get louder and louder and louder, because they're not getting the attention of the people who should be providing them attention. You provide them attention, your undivided attention, and they will talk to you like a human being. It's amazing how that works. Roadmapping, this is a little phrase I initiated with Centennial, because we did this, very beginning, we had, I interviewed citizens, and I said, "What'd you think of the meeting?" And they said, "I had no clue what was going on. They used acronyms. I didn't know when we switched from one thing to the other. I was clueless, and it was a waste of my time to come down here." And I heard that over and over again. So I said, "What would have made it easier for you, citizen, for this meeting?" They said, "Tell me what we're doing." And I call this roadmapping. And we do this in Centennial, and it's the mayor who does it. The mayor makes great pains, and other council members join in. The mayor takes great pains to say, "The next item on the agenda is this," or "Tonight, we're going to do what we're going to do in the consent agenda. Here's what the consent agenda's all about." And they tell the citizens, because you all heard this a million times, they tell the citizens, "This is what a consent agenda is, every meeting." So they go, "Oh, well, that makes sense. Now I understand what the city council's doing, and I'm not lost." Okay? And so there's all these points in the agenda where there's actually scripts, if you go on the website at centennialco.gov, you'll see on our agendas, there's materials the mayor reads in, and explains to the citizen as we transition through the meeting of what we're doing. And citizens feel more in tuned and understanding of where the council's going, and they don't get the frustration. Another thing that U.S. council members can do is make sure you roadmap your own words, okay? We all fall prey, especially lawyers and engineers, to acronyms. We love them. We write them on the backs of our hands and tattoo them, and we love to speak in acronyms. The citizens have no clue what those things are, and you lose them faster than just about anything by talking, like we do repeatedly in Centennial, about SIMSWA. SIMSWA, 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 SIMSWA. Everybody uses SIMSWA, because it's far easier to say that than the Southeast Metro Stormwater Authority. But we only have to make sure, and we take religious pains to do this, we make sure that we introduce the acronym. When the council member's speaking, they all are paying attention. They say, "I'm going to introduce this issue about SIMSWA." They will say, "SIMSWA means..." And the count, and the people in the audience go, "Oh, okay. I'm on board," because they don't know what SIMSWA is. And you would be shocked at how many acronyms we use in government, and all it does is lose our citizens who we're serving and making sure that they're getting value for their money. So I would implore you to roadmap as much as you can, and speak to the citizens, because that's the people you're providing the product to. Yes, you'll all understand it at the dais, but you need to make sure they understand it, too. Being lost, by the way, as a citizen, makes you angrier, because now your government's not serving you. We're talking in code, and they even get angry at the microphone action. Okay, the roles, the role of rules of order. We talked now about effective mayor, effective council members, effective meetings, the fact that we're providing product, that these things are all important for us, because this is what we are elected to. But we still want to make sure that we quell or quiet dysfunction in the list of things that cause dysfunction, and some of those are rules. And we follow rules all the time. This is not a big deal. People always get freaked out when I start talking about rules, "You're going to impose all this stuff on us." We follow rules every day. It's part of life. And we realize that rules make us more efficient as a society, and they make things, they order things out, and I love the rules of order, it makes sense. And it goes to all of the reasons for dysfunction. It goes to professionalism and courtesy, because when you're all following the same rules, you're more, you tend more to be professional and courteous to other people, because you're all bound by the same rules. One doesn't get to spout off, and the other one has to be quiet. Member equity is served by rules. When you all use rules and you follow the rules, you know where we're going, and you know how to get there, and you all have an equal opportunity to carve up the meeting so that it might serve your constituents. And the lack of the right leadership. Leaders need the rules, because they need to tell you what we're doing. And if they don't know what we're doing, that there's no rules, they make it up. And one time it's unfair, another time it's confusing, and no one benefits from that. Member participation, you know by the rules when you get to participate and to what extent you do. And it's true for everybody, okay? It addresses lack of rules, obviously, and it attracts, can address the lack of rule use or rule knowledge, if it's the right rules. Good rules and not-so-good rules. Robert's Rules of Order, in ninety percent of the communities I go into when they ask me to analyze what they're doing, ninety percent, if not maybe eighty, eighty nowadays, use Robert's Rules of Order. When I say use Robert's Rules, they do this. Their underlying rules that they use for their governing body reference the fact that we use Robert's Rules of Order. That means you use them. That means that you will follow them. And under this idea that we follow rules, and when we get challenged on something in court, we have to go into the judge and say, "Judge, we followed our rules, and some of our rules are Robert's Rules. And if we didn't follow Robert's Rules, then we didn't do a legally sufficient job." So saying Robert's Rules means you better use Robert's Rules. There's also Rosenberg's Rules, you'll find on the internet. It's just, they're out there, they're publicly used in some communities, but they're extremely vague. And then most communities, local rules. A lot of communities have their own local rules. But I don't care what you use. In my view of making meetings functional and effective, the best rules are rules that you're going to use. I don't care if you use Robert's Rules, as long as you all know them and you use them. Great. And they have to be simple and understandable, or else you have a huge inequity with regard to how the rules are used. They're used as a sword and/or a shield by people who are knowledgeable about the rules. What I mean by that is that if I know the rules far better than you do, because they're complex, I might be able to quell your participation in the council by doing something funky, that you have no clue what I'm doing. And neither did the rest of the council, but I, my knowledge of the rules can help me manipulate some issue. Robert's Rules are extremely susceptible to that kind of manipulation. So I want simple when I go into a community. I want to see that they're using them, and they all understand them, they've read them, and they're, they don't even need to go back to them, because they're so simple. That's really what we're looking for. And why Robert's Rules, and I'm, again, my tire's slashed by Robert Rules people all the time, but here's the deal. You know how old they are, and you know how big they are. I brought my copy here, okay? So what we would do in the city of Inglewood is we would give each one of you a copy of these rules, and you better know all thirty-seven or thirty-eight of the motions in here, and how they're to be used, and what the voting requirements are. You better understand that you can be penalized monetarily if somebody finds you're out of order, that you didn't follow the rules. I can impose a penalty against you monetarily, and you have to pay it before you leave the chambers that night. It's in here, you better know the rules, right? So if I know them and you don't, I can hurt you with these. But this is ludicrous for local government, okay? Yet they all have them. Yours do, okay? It's not a fault, I'm not saying bad you. I'm saying you're like everybody else, blindly referring to something that you think everybody uses. These are only useful for extremely large organizations who have parliamentarians who guide the entire function of the community, of the organization, who can say, "This is what the rule says, and here's how it's used." You don't all have to know, because a parliamentarian's going to take us through it. They're terrible. You've got, anytime you've got Rules for Dummies, anytime you've got any publication on how to understand a publication, and if you've got dozens of websites that tell you how to condense this thing down to forty pages... how to condense this thing down to forty pages, you got a document that won't work. Enough lecturing about Robert's Rules. So I like simplified stuff. And I've never seen a local government, ever, that could use Robert's Rules effectively. Simple rules. I call 'em Bob's Rules only because I drafted them up for enough communities based loosely on Robert's Rules. I draft them up, I finally decide, "Why don't I just do this template that I give out?" And I've given them out across the state and I hope people use them, but I never expect anybody to use them verbatim. What I expect you to do is take the idea that you can simplify rules, meld them down to what works for your community. And those are the rules that you're gonna use. Bob's Rules, which you can get a copy of from, from your management or on the internet or from CML, are extremely simple. They're so simple, I believe, that you can read through them once or twice and you have them down. There's also a little matrix in the back that gives you the important information that you can follow. And that's all you need. In Centennial, we use them and we actually have the matrix laminated in each person's desk. So the council members know real quickly what's required for any of the individual motions. Very simple terminology. We do not need seventy-six pages of terminology definitions. You don't need that. You need one page and it's simple things that you already know. You don't even have to read Bob's Rules of Order to know the definitions of what's in Bob's Rules of Order. You know what out of order is. The floor, chairperson, body. Okay? They're idiot-proof. Okay? I would like somebody to create a dummy's rules for Bob's Rules, but they're simple and that's what I'm after here. Basic requirements are these. The chairperson, here the mayor, would serve as the parliamentarian. What that means is the chairperson, the mayor, is the person who makes the ultimate call on anything that's before you that there's confusion. What's the voting requirement for an executive session? The mayors will say, as the parliamentarian, "The voting requirement is two-thirds." And that is the rule. That's the statement of the rule. Chance to challenge it under Bob's Rules, but that person is the one that we will turn to, to make the calls with regard to what the rules require. We have a recognition like all good bodies should have, that you have to have the floor to speak. Makes sense. And you don't want two people speaking at the same time. My favorite story about that is I defended a county in a piece of litigation in which we had this, we had to hinge the entire litigation upon the fact that there was evidence in the record to make the decision. And it was a beautiful serenade of reasons why this particular application should be denied. And when that particular council or county commissioner started speaking with all this great stuff, which was the evidence, what you heard on the record was, "Did you still wanna come over with your kids this weekend because I'm gonna have the pool running?" And it was a discussion between two councilmen, two county commissioners on the microphones while somebody else was making the perfect testimony that was gonna win the case. Kid you not. Now, we won the case because we're just good. But the point being is that having conversations in the room at the same time is never good. It's dysfunctional in the sense of respect to the community and your other council members. And it also creates some practical situations like records that are incomplete. No side discussions are allowed. You must have the floor. And you must vote yes or no under Bob's Rules. Now, some communities have changed this. They don't agree with me. Okay? My theory under yes or no, and we use this in many of my communities, we require yes or no's and you cannot abstain. The theory of this rule is that you were elected to represent your constituents. Abstaining does not represent your constituents. You only do not participate if you have a conflict of interest. And if you have a good ethics code, you have a conflict of interest and you have an appearance of impropriety, we won't get into that tonight. But my point being is this, you represent your constituents by showing up and by voting. If you try in these communities that we've used Bob's Rules in this form, if you abstain, if you say, "I abstain," it's counted as a no vote automatically. You don't get the chance of bailing out. Is this important? We've had it come up in a couple of communities where council members didn't just wanna go on the record. They didn't wanna be held to a vote on that particular issue. For political reasons, for ego reasons. Because they didn't wanna have a record of how they voted because they're worried about getting reelected. And they bailed out. And they didn't represent their constituents. So this is why that rule's there. I wouldn't fault any community for saying, "That is perfectly good reasons to let people bail out and we all want that right." No explaining the vote except during deliberation. Very common problem for governments. And it's very, it's a very snake in the grass problem issue. Here's how it works. We go around and we take the vote on the mat, on the motion that's pending. And you say, "Yes." And you say, "No." And you say, "Well, I'm gonna vote yes and here's why." I didn't deliberate, I didn't participate in the deliberation. But I'm gonna explain now after you two have voted, or even after everybody's voted and now it's down to you. And now you're thinking, "Wow, this is great. I can explain my vote." You explain your vote in a way that other people wanna change it. Now we're dysfunctional. Now other people, "Excuse me, I'd like to change my vote." That's, that's dysfunction. That is dysfunction. You're either yes or no. You've heard all the testimony and you, by coming in late, you do this all the time, right? You, by coming in late, are snake in the grass and you're not being helpful for the community. So what we do is we have very discreet areas on the agenda and the mayor does this. "This is time for deliberation. I'd like to hear from all of you why you are supportive or opposed to the motion that's pending and give your reasons why." And he or she will open it up, call off the people, let them speak in accordance with the way the rules are written. And if somebody lays silent, the mayor rightfully says, "Ms. Smith, we haven't heard from you. Do you have anything to add?" We call it calling out the council member. And Ms. Smith, nine times out of ten, will say, "You know, I listened to comments and I'm gonna vote yes because I agree with the following people." Fair. Fair to everybody as opposed to snake in the grass and not doing it. Definitely a problem when they get to explain their vote when it's made. That's dysfunction. So we do not allow individuals in these communities that have adopted Bob's Rules to explain the vote. You explain it during deliberation. Fair to everyone. Makes it hard for us to also, when you do this voting, voting explanation at your final vote, for us of us who make bets, staff, on what way an issue's gonna go, you mess us all up. Just because we, we are looking at each other thinking, "Hi, just turned the deliberation. I'm gonna win this one. It's gonna be four-three." And when you wait until the end, it messes us all up. Bob's Rules has these two things in them. They have points and motions. Okay? Loosely framed around some of the stuff in Bob and Robert's Rules. Points are matters in which you do not need the floor. I can pop off without having the floor and I can pop out without having the mayor recognize me. And this is how it works. We're engaged in debate. There are three things I get to pop off on and not ask for the floor and interrupt another person who's speaking. And that's called a point. Very limited situations. Everything else is motions. Okay? I mentioned priority only because people always ask me about this stuff. You learn priority really quickly. Certain things can be expressed before other things. It's simple to understand. We're not gonna go into it here. The points are these. Point of information, point of order, and point of appeal. These are the only things you get to interrupt somebody and take the floor. And here's how they generally work. A point of information is something I need to know right now in order to continue to participate and listen in on the meeting. Okay? Good example is the following. Without asking for the floor, somebody else is talking on the issue, I will say, "Excuse me, point of information." And the mayor will shut down the discussion and say, "Yes, you have a point of information." My point of information is this. We've heard testimony from the traffic engineer that there's five thousand cars on this road an hour. We heard testimony from the, from the applicant's traffic that there's five hundred. Is it five thousand or five hundred? I need that information right now. Point of information. Okay? And the mayor will say, "Let's find out the answer to that." Get the answer to that, you're done. The floor goes back to whoever had it. That's a point of information. It is not for the purpose of interrupting the discussion for you to give information. Excuse me, point of order. Yes, you have, you have the floor now. Yes, I'd like everyone to know that here's how I see the issue. No, that's not a point of information. That would be out of order. Okay? Rules are very clear. Point of information is to receive information. Point of order is to call somebody, yes, call a situation before the body that's not in accordance with our rules. Okay? We've not gone in the right direction. Okay? For example, if we had a rule that says every council member has to be, has to be provided an opportunity to speak and only until everyone has spoken and/or passed is a person can speak second, the next time. If that person's called too soon, I would say, "Point of order." And the mayor would say, "Stop the discussion. We have a point of order. What's the point of order?" Well, Councilmember Smith has already spoken once and I haven't had an opportunity, neither has Councilmember Jones. We're out of order here. Our rules require that we speak before that person has a second chance. Mayor would say, "You are absolutely right as the parliamentarian." The mayor would say, "I'm the parliamentarian. You're right." Okay? So we'll shut down the discussion and we'll move on and make sure everybody has their opportunity. That's a point of order. Point of order. The point of information, to go back one, can also be this. It can be, "Can I have the heat turned up in here? I'm freezing it up. It's uncomfortable for me."
Read my mind.
That's a point of information. I'm not, I'm asking for information. Can somebody turn up the heat? Okay? It can be effectively done this way as opposed to, "I formally moved the mayor for, I would like the floor. I'd like to formally move for recess because I'm gonna wet my pants." I just did that on the record, didn't I? See, that's why I hate being taped. I need, I can use a point of information. Is it possible that we could take a break at this point in time? Okay? Because oftentimes, getting a break shouldn't be a formal thing. Right? Shouldn't be. So that's a point of information, point of order. Point of appeal is when the parliamentarian, the mayor, has made a proclamation and you disagree. You don't like, you don't think that's in accordance with the rules. Mayor, I'd like a point of appeal. You just said it's a two, it's a, it's a three-quarter vote or three-fourth vote on this particular issue. I think our rules require it to be two-thirds or majority. I'd like to raise a point of appeal on your decision. Stops all debate. Now let's solve the problem before we can move on. These are the ways in which you interrupt the body. And that's it. Otherwise, you ask for the floor. And when you ask for the floor, you're allowed to do these ten things. And these are the ones that, in my experience, that government needs. There's a couple on here you could do without. But these are the ones that I've heard in government, in local government, more frequently than not. You know what these are. You know, recessing the, the meeting so we all go to the bathroom. You know, an executive session, which is a very important motion, which has a lot of little bells and whistles attached that your, your local council advises you on all the time. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Some communities do away with that. They allow, they authorize through the rules, the mayor, to adjourn a meeting at any time without objection of the body. So mayor would say, "I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting seeing no objection." Why do a formal motion? Right? Everyone knows we're done with the agenda. Everyone knows the Raiders are playing the Broncos tonight. We're done with this meeting. We do not need somebody to say, "Excuse me, I'd like the floor. I move to adjourn. Let's have a second and everybody votes." No. The mayor has the power to just declare it. So sometimes you see communities that kill the motion to adjourn. Motion to reconsider is a very specialized motion, very complicated. In Robert's Rules, extremely complicated. More simplified in Bob's Rules, but basically it's a chance that after we've already decided an issue, can we go back and reverse our decision? Legally complicated motion to do, especially on quasi-judicial matters, but it's, it's one that's available because it does come into play once in a while. Motion to postpone to a certain, to a date certain is very commonly used. We're not gonna get to this or we need some more information, whatever it happens to be. We're gonna postpone this particular matter, but we're gonna set the date in time for it to come back. Postponing indefinitely is basically to take it off the agenda. You're not gonna see it unless somebody makes a stink about it. Main motion is just about everything else. This is all our business stuff. "I move to," whatever it happens to be. Okay? Doesn't matter what it is. A motion to amend, which can only be a main motion amendment. And in Bob's Rules, unlike Robert's Rules, you cannot amend a motion to amend. You cannot go on with a motion to amend, to amend, to amend, to amend because everyone loses control over what the heck we're doing. So it's only one motion to amend. Somebody proposes that, "I move to amend the land, I motion, I move, move to approve the land use application that's before us." Somebody else says, "I'd like to amend your motion to," and they would add some additional stuff to it. That's as far as it goes. Then you deal with that motion to amend before anybody else can try to amend the main motion. You dispense with it. Motion that's in Bob's Rules, not Robert's Rules. Motion to continue to a date certain, very commonly done and oftentimes done to get more information on a particular issue. I need, I'm, I'd like to just hold this thing over and then oftentimes ask for some information in the interim. And a motion to call the question, which is oftentimes called, called closed debate, extremely powerful motion, extremely carefully used. This is when you're gonna tell everybody else in the city council, "Shut up. We're done." Okay? It's a very carefully done motion. It will, if, it will, if passed and approved, will essentially, effectively stop everyone else from speaking and you go right to the main motion. So it's basically to shut the council up. It has to be a supermajority. And so you always be very careful to use that. In some of my communities, I have people who are my points of order people. They love, they love the points of order and they're always ready to go with points of order and calling people out of order. They're usually the people who know the, the rules of order better than anybody else. Okay? Those are the ten motions. That's it. Because everything else that you might need, you're gonna accomplish under a main motion. Because you can make that into whatever form you want it to be. You could actually, for example, on the point of information about turning the heat up, you could actually make a main motion, say, "I move to have somebody turn the heat up to sixty-eight." That would be an acceptable main motion, as with just about anything else you can dream up. Flexibility is provided in the rules by allowing the chairperson, the discretion, discretion to make decisions subject to appeal. So he can say, "I'm gonna forego this or I'm gonna forego that or we're gonna do this." Unless somebody wants to appeal that decision, it's going to be binding. Unless somebody wants to appeal that decision, it's going to be binding. And the chairperson, the mayor, has the discretion to modify the rules unless somebody objects, and to also suspend the rules. Basically say, I don't think on this particular matter, we need to abide by the rule that everyone gets to speak one time, has to speak one time before we go to the second, the next person for a second speaks. He's, I'm going to suspend that rule. That's his proclamation as the parliamentarian. If somebody disagrees, they'll move to appeal, and they'll say, point of appeal, and say, I'm going to appeal that because our rules require it, and if there's an objection, you can't do it. And they'll, they'll be right. And you'll say, you are exactly right. My bad. And you'll move on. So the, the whole point of Bob's rules is that you have something to work with to fashion around how it is that you, as a government, best work. I'm not saying, in any stretch of the imagination, that Bob's rules are going to be perfect for everybody in, in the form that they're provided. They're simply not. You may always want to do something different. Okay? But what works for you, and what you draft, should be easy, and everyone reads it, and everyone understands it, and there's no question from then on. And you will find out that those rules that you adopt are going to aid in the, alleviate in dysfunction, because nobody, everybody's on the same playing field. They know what's coming. They know how to do it. Okay? There's no question. They're all fair. And oftentimes, they're fair because they give everybody rights to speak. That's what I had prepared to speak on. I have another fifteen or twenty minutes, if, if you want, to talk about staff-council relationships, how you relate to the staff members that you have working for you. And it's pretty simplified, but it's up to you, mayor, and the council, on whether you want that part of the presentation, or you just want to go to questions.
I do think we're going to get there. Perhaps I'll open it up for councilmember questions or comments at this point, on the ground that we've already sort of covered. Go ahead, Councilmember Verentan.
You said that you handle a couple municipalities. You referred to Centennial. What other ones do you do?
Well, until very recently, my firm represented more of the state's population than any other private law firm. Far more. For example, Cherry Hills Village, Hot Silver Springs, Lyons, Colorado, Castle Pines.
Well, just give me a couple around here. I wanted to kind of look at some of their, their ways that they've been using this as some examples. So Cherry Hills?
Cherry Hills would be local. We have a prohibition in our service contracts that keeps us from working from communities that have conflicts by boundary.
All right.
So it basically cleans us up from doing much in the front, immediate front range. So a lot of our clients are outside.
Okay, so Cherry Hills and Centennial, then?
And Centennial are the two biggest ones. So for example-
Well, Centennial's got a boundary to a lot of, most of what's around here.
Whole lot. So if Lone Tree calls me up and says, we want you to work for us, I'd have to say, no, thank you.
Is this basically, I mean, I, I think a lot of this was what I had done when I went to CML, that you gave this as well at CML, so that if people attend CML, and they want more of this, then they can also attend that. But it's basically kind of the same-
Absolutely.
-one that we did at CML?
Yes.
And we did have a parliamentarian, and it wasn't that long ago, because I'm not, like, that ancient, but when I was on council before, we did have a parliamentarian. Is it according to the Bob's rules that you were kind of wanting the mayor or the chair of the, it becomes the parliamentarian?
And the reason behind that is that it's very difficult for your staff members to serve as parliamentarians. For example, the city attorney, which is not uncommonly done. We're going to have our city attorney be the arbiter of all things on our order.
Yeah, it didn't work well last time.
Doesn't. City clerk's another one. A lot of people like, city clerk will be our parliamentarian. And then the city clerk's sitting there with her boss's bosses and saying, the three of you are smart, and the four of you are not, or whatever it happens to be. It's uncomfortable for staff to make, staff to make those calls. I hate to do it as a city, as a city attorney. I'd rather put the mayor in the hot seat.
Of course you would.
Because the mayor is the leader of the group, right?
Well, in the hierarchy of who gets to go get eggs thrown at them, I suppose so. I mean, it didn't work, it was for a very short period of time, because it stopped, I think, in two thousand four, maybe? But we did have a, actually, an actual parliamentarian. And then the city attorney took over, and I, and then I guess we've kind of had a mix of some things going on. But it is difficult, because it's, you don't, a parliamentarian, you don't want it just to be whoseever majority rule, or, you know, in the majority that they just get to, because then it's not really rules. I mean, then it's just whoever's in power-
You're, you're absolutely right.
...could start to play. So, so I just wanted to be clear about that. So I read that right.
And if I could just interject there. I mean, I do think that's currently the structure that's sort of contemplated here. We generally use the term presiding officer of the meeting, but, you know, most of those determinations, as sort of described by Bob here, do come to the mayor here currently, I think.
And, and I would respectfully disagree with you. I think that we overwhelmingly rely on the city attorney and put her in a, in a, in a, in a spot that I think puts her in that, in that role. So I think once, maybe a decision has to be made one way or the other. I mean, I don't, I'm not disagreeing that that doesn't happen a lot of the time, but I think more than an equal amount of the time. And if somebody disagrees with the mayor, they just look to her and go, who's she going to side with? And, and I think that that does put the city attorney, I agree with you, in a, in a bad spot.
Well, again, I just don't want you to confuse, I think, you know, when the mayor and the city attorney agree, you know, that is always, in my mind, coming through the authority of the presiding officer. You know, even though sometimes that position may change as a result of the advice of the city attorney, it's always, you know, coming through the authority of the presiding officer.
I don't think I'm confused about it.
Fair enough.
The need to, down to what works for your community. Oh, so it was a comment that you made about you kind of like have this out there for, I mean, this training to kind of meld it a little. I think that's exact, that's not need, it's meld. I don't often use the word, sorry. Meld down to what works for your community, so kind of picking that out. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, well, I might have taken a little bit of a, Bob's rules are idiot-proof.
Absolutely not. They, they need to be-
I'm sure you weren't referring to either the councils of Cherry Hills or Centennial. Have been told to provide an explanation of the vote. And, and that I had a question of, because we've specifically, I mean, I served on the liquor authority prior to being on the council, and I counseled several times, both with Brosman and under, I don't know, and other attorneys, that they go, that we have some kind of obligation, actually, to explain our vote. And so are you just saying that that's what it is? Because we've kind of gotten into that flow of doing that, that this is why I'm voting, or I will be voting no on this, or whatever, that we've kind of got into that kind of formality of doing that?
As a lawyer, I think it's incredibly valuable to have all the council members who are liquor licensing board members, whatever organization you are, to have everyone participate and give their reasons. Even if it's as simple as saying, I agree wholeheartedly with what I've heard so far in favor of approving this, whatever it is. That is invariably valuable. What is always terrible to have is the exact opposite, which is very common in mid and small cities, is no one says anything about why they're voting on the particular matter. They'll have the entire hearing, and then the mayor will say, does anybody have anything? And somebody says, I move to approve. And no one has said boo about the evidence that was presented, and they vote on it. Now, if we get a 106 challenge, or we end up in court having to defend it, where is the deliberation, the, the things that we're going to tell the judge, here's why the council approved this application? We have none of it. We, we have to surmise it from the record, which means we go in and we think, we think this is what they were thinking about. It's so much better to have everybody say, no, we're going to approve this because it meets the six criteria in our land development code. That is unbelievably valuable as a lawyer. And that's why this obligation, some communities like the obligation that people must speak. It's incumbent upon the mayor to call people out so that he's not, or she's not getting feedback. We're only, another problem that we have, only one person voices an opinion during deliberation, and it's in opposition to the motion to approve. And then everyone approves it. Where in the record, before that we give to the judge, is the explanation of why that one person who opposed it, who was articulate about how this project doesn't meet our requirements? Everyone else voted yes. It does meet the requirements, with no explanation. That is a terrible situation to be in as a lawyer to defend a community when the record is great for denial, but terrible for approval, or vice versa. So I implore councilmembers to, to spout off the reasons why they believe the application or the matter, whether it's pending before us, should be approved. It's good practice. It's fair to the folks out there, too. If you don't say anything, and you say what you're voting, yes, no? Is that good representative government for them?
Right. When you have that constant majority council doing, you do hear a lot of that, that, and what, I guess what it gives the impression of is that people decided before they came there, or that they're deciding behind, outside of there. So, yeah, I can understand-
Lots of implications of social development.
...it would be difficult for the court. I only have one last question. Are there any of the rules that are in here, and I, and I had gone through the training piece of it, we didn't have the PowerPoint, but I don't find any of the Bob's rules that aren't compatible or complementary with some Robert's rule?
They, like I said, they're all based upon Robert's rules in general.
Are there any that are not? I guess I should have put it that way.
Yes, there's one.
Yeah.
And your lips, they're not.
I like that, how it works. It's very helpful.
There is one that is not compatible, and I visited with Bob about this a couple weeks ago, when I, when I asked about bringing Bob's rules in. And five of you will remember, the first study session that I ever attended, I was the first person on the agenda, and what I was tasked with was finding a way to give you the, the power to enforce your own rules of decorum. So as I was putting together the Bob's rules, I added in point of decorum. And the difference is, is that you're, you set the decorum rules, they're not part of your procedural rules. You can change your decorum rules with a, with a mere vote, whereas rules of procedure have to be adopted by ordinance. So I added in that point of decorum. That is not in Robert's rules, but that's something that this body specifically requested.
And I would say that that's exactly what's intended by customizing the rules to what you need. Because if you have, unlike many communities, an obligation to approve your rules of procedure or rules of order by ordinance, you're absolutely right. You cannot change them without another ordinance. There's case law to that effect. So by placing the decorum rules into a different category, easier to amend, easier to manipulate, that's absolutely what I intend to do. Because you, you have that one limitation that's custom to your community. In many other communities, you adopt the rules of order by resolution, so you would need another resolution to change the rules of order. Same kind of problem. Some are council policies, which are informally done by motion, which can be changed very easily. But I prefer resolution or ordinance, because these are serious things that you're going to abide by, time in and time out, and you do not want to modify them, except for very good reason.
So to the question that I asked, so the only thing, he, he didn't, but you did, put something in here, and where is that?
That's under, if you look at the chart at the very end, you'll see that there aren't four points listed, but there, there aren't three points listed, but there are four points.
So you didn't put it in the body of this, you just put it in the chart?
The draft you got on, in November, didn't have any explanation in the body, but after visiting with Bob, I went back, and the, the draft that was posted includes an explanation of what points of, what a point of decorum would require. So there's a, a short blurb on that in the one that's posted. Other than that, they're the same.
So it's not in this one I got in November?
The short explanation is not in the one that I gave you in November, but it is in the chart.
So the answer for you was no?
No, it's not in there.
And the answer for her was yes.
And actually-
All right, thanks.
Anybody else with questions or comments? Good, get some more rules.
Did you want to finish your statement?
No, I was just going to say that decorum is a very important thing for communities and extremely customized. The decorum rules that we use, for example, in Centennial, because we have extremely small city council meeting room, we have decorum rules that actually tell the press and the media where they have to sit within the room, that they just can't walk around with their camera wherever they want, because we, it gets in the way. So we've actually gone as far as to be very curtailing, whereas in your situation, it wouldn't matter to you. So decorum rules can be, or should be very customized to how you conduct business. Some communities have decorum rules that prohibit individuals from carrying posters into the room, because they interfere with the sightlines of the people who want to see what's going on with these huge signs. That's not a bad decorum rule to have, right? So, all sorts of different ones for different communities.
Great. I have a couple of questions. So, discussion by all before voting is a helpful one. We haven't always followed that on every single person. It's been pretty obvious in the conversations where people fall in things, but we haven't necessarily gone through the line like that. But I have noticed in some of our quasi-judicial groups, particularly planning and zoning, we, we vote after we've had all the conversation. We all vote at once, so we, we aren't like, okay, I voted no just now because of this after it's over, so. But, you know, I have noticed in some others that, that they do go one by one and vote, and say why they're doing it. And, and some have not spoken the whole time. So how, what have you done with boards and, and commissions when they're making decisions like that? Have you seen cities that just say, okay, we're all going to follow these sort of, with these sets of rules, and, and then train them, or?
Yes. In most of the communities who have, who have formally adopted versions of Bob's rules of order, they actually do the same rules for their boards and commissions. And it's easy, because oftentimes you're advancing, sometimes in these smaller communities, from the BOA to the planning and zoning commission, to the board trustees.
Right.
And you've used the same rules the whole time. And it's also easier for the lawyers, because, or whoever's doing your helping with your parliamentary procedure, to know that I don't need to bring a different set of rules to each organization I'm sitting with. And by the rule with regard to that, the mayor in Bob's rules is the parliamentarian, but it does allow the mayor to consult with the city attorney, because oftentimes, there might be something subtle that's going on. I will tell you that in the hundred times that we've had parliamentary decisions by the mayors in Centennial, I was never asked boo about it. Why? Because the mayor knows the rules probably better than I do, so. And I wrote them. And that's just how it works. How it works.
I think I asked them all in one, so I think I'm done.
Anybody else?
Sir, Mr. Winder, thank you for the presentation. Very, very good and enlightening. On page eighteen, the top slide, which pertained to the scope of employment, the third point regarding in and out immunity for council reliance. So a council member gets some sort of guidance from the city attorney. They follow that guidance, and there's damage or harm occurs, and it sounds as though, assuming that the guidance provided isn't just outrageously unbelievable, that there is some sort of immunity for that council member. Where does that liability then fall, if anywhere? If it skips the council member, where would that liability go to?
It, it depends on the situation that the individual's engaged in, what you did, but likely it dies there. It would not be a cause of action or a claim that could be brought by the individual because of the particular actions that you did. They don't get to divert it, but I can't get you, because you're immune, because you followed legal counsel, I can't sue the legal counsel, because they're definitely protected. There's no one else in the loop. So they're just out of luck. Okay? They could try to sue the organization, the municipality. I would argue that immunity extends to the municipality. But following legal counsel will protect you individually, individually. That's what you're worried about, is what sleeps, you sleep well at night. But the city's on the hook, they're successful in bringing the claim against the city of Inglewood. I can't get you personally, I can't take your house away from you, I might have a claim against the city. The lawyers will have to be creative in defending the city. There may be no one in the line of fire. But that's not your concern, right? Your concern is protecting yourself by having relied upon legal counsel. Thank you.
I think that governmental immunity is kind of an interesting concept, too, in just saying that, hey, you know, as long as we're sort of not out, you know, governmental entity in and of itself is not sort of outside, that there's just this general idea of, you know, immunity for a governmental entity. Obviously, it gets a lot more complicated than that, but, you know, maybe that's the answer to the question, is, you know, fall back on the entity if possible.
And the nice thing about the immunity given for relying upon legal counsel is it spans both state claims as, as well as federal claims. So if somebody were to sue you in federal court, and you were relying upon your legal counsel advice, and it was, and it was advice that you should have known is wrong, you're going to be immune even in federal court, whereas the Governmental Immunity Act only applies to claims in the state court. So it's a better immunity for you to follow your counsel. Councilmember Olson?
One other question. So one of the things that I think kind of subverts our ability to have conversations about an issue is that we do, just like one person gets to speak, the next person speaks, the next person speaks, and often, I, probably more than anybody else, wants to know why someone else thinks something, and so that disrupts the flow, and I think, well, tell me more about that, but that doesn't seem to follow the flow of doing it like you're suggesting, and which probably makes the most sense for effective meetings. But yet, if I really want to understand, why, why do you think that way? Give me some more background. What, what recommendations do you have for that? I mean, a study session can be one place that happens, but sometimes we're up there and we're, we're kind of stuck.
You can, it, depending on how the attitude of your council might be on this issue of allowing a point of information to be voiced, okay? And it be a consistent with Bob's rules thought process, is that you just heard a fairly eloquent explanation, but that's very confusing with regard to something else. It would be mask a point, a point of order, and the mayor goes, yes, and you say, I'd like to know a little bit more about that particular issue of why you're opposed to a ten-foot leash instead of a six-foot leash. That would be an appropriate use. Now, it's going to be incumbent upon you, and this is what I mean by the attitude of your community, is to not misuse that kind of stuff, to allow a council member to, to effectively dominate through a point of information the discussion, constantly, in everybody's face. That's a bad practice, and it's one that you need to sit down independently with, mayor should, independently with the council member, and say, you're being disruptive, and you're not helping us accomplish the goal. Some people can unreasonably misuse the point of information.
I think we've been using point of order for everything, probably. So point of information, explain what you think are really helpful distinctions between that. I love that we've added point of decorum. I think that's a great addition here.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, last part. The point, let's differentiate between the two. Point of order means that we have written rules in our rules of order. It says we're supposed, says we're supposed to do something. We're not doing it. Point of order, get on the order of our rules. Point of information isn't about the rules. Information is that I need something out here in the ether that's going to help me understand the circumstances, or the situation, or get the temperature boosted up, so I'm more comfortable, so I'm not freezing to death. Okay? That's, the information is, information as opposed to forming our, our actions in accordance with the rules.
So point of order could be feasibly used for maybe rabbit holes, too, that are going, that we might get into and-
If your rules say-
Pull it back.
That's a tough rule to make. That's a tough rule to make. We shall go down no rabbit holes, define that one.
Sometimes we find things there, though, so I'm not always opposed to that.
Yeah. I've not drafted a point of, I've not drafted a rule of order that says no rabbit holes.
Who decides what the rabbit hole is?
But you could, I guess you could be creative, a council could be creative, and define, you know, the debate on the issue, what it means to debate the issue, and allow for a point of order to say, I think we're, I think, as point of order, I think we might be off topic of what our agenda says we are supposed to be discussing. And that would be incumbent upon people to support you, in particular the parliamentarians, and I think you're right, we've run down a rabbit hole here. But sometimes rabbit holes can pop out in the right location, so it's really incumbent upon you to be fairly sophisticated, council members, about whether you're wasting time or you're, you're not. More so than not, you're wasting time. But every once in a while, somebody could, for example, it happens in court, you know, explain what you mean by what you're expressing. So you would say, point of order, I think we're deviating from our rules by going down a rabbit hole here, we're talking about cats and this whole thing's about dogs, okay? And the parliamentarian says, well, let's, let's go a little bit further and have a little bit more explanation by the cat lover over here on how it relates back to dogs. And then you give them a little bit of leeway, and they can say, well, here's why it works, okay? And if they can't substantiate it, then the parliamentarian would say, I think you're right, we are down a rabbit hole. But it all requires a rule of order that says no rabbit holes, however you define that.
Got to be active in that process, yeah.
And I think that's been part of the issue that our council has faced, is the ambiguity of some of our rules, and that always leaves some level of subjectivity for the presiding officer of our meeting to, you know, hey, have we gone too far down this rabbit hole, or shall we allow slightly more discussion? And that's why, in my mind, the, you know, appeal of the presiding officer is in our rules, and that the council can say, no, mayor, you know, we respectfully say, we've gone too far down this rabbit hole, even though you say we can go a little further.
Now, I would point out for you, mayor, and any mayor, is that you have to be careful in whether you're caught seeing the rabbit hole, because they're not going in the direction that you want them to go-
Fair enough.
-which is ego, versus, am I still making, maintaining enough fertile ground for us to make a good decision here? Why am I going to shut them down?
I only work on fertile ground, sir, so I'm not making-
Something to be thinking about.
No, thank you for that.
Go off of what Councilmember Olson was talking about. I had the opportunity to listen to a council meeting from a few years ago, and I was reminded that even when I was on council before, and not that long ago in the history of council, it was a much more conversational style to it. And I feel Councilmember Olson's frustration at times, that by the time we turn our little blocks over, that feel a little kindergartenish sometimes, but by the time you get to the person, it's been so long ago that the person made the comment, it's almost be ridiculous to go, okay, four people ago, when you said that yes, pigs can fly in Inglewood, what did you mean about that? Like, how were you referencing that? And so by that time, the point, while still important to try to really understand what that person is saying, or why they're making the comment, becomes some, just lost in the weeds by the time you get back around to it. So, I mean, I could see the point of information thing being used that way, but I almost, and at times it got a little weird, because people were kind of talking over each other occasionally, but it also was somewhat workable, too. So, I mean, I feel your frustration in that, and I realize why things get that way, but it is, because there's a lot of times that by the time that person, by the time you have a chance to come back around, or if you're dumb enough to talk first, and then somebody else talk, and you go, wait, oh, I hate, but, or I meant, or whatever, so, but then by the time you can address it, it's kind of almost, it almost kind of cultures the ability to have that conversation or ask that question.
Everything you said is absolutely fair game on fashioning rules of order, and it's very, the very astute comments about how things typically work. Here's how it's addressed with this issue of disentachment of, because so many people speak, is that many communities limit the amount of time that a council member can speak until they have another opportunity. And it's incumbent upon the presiding officer, and it's clumsy a little bit to say, you know, you get your two minutes, and if they go on past two minutes. The general rule, though, is that, in observation, is that most people can get their point made in two minutes, and anything else is just kind of boring us to death, as demonstrated tonight by a two-hour presentation. But the, at least one person, at least one, at least one. So my point being is this, is that if it, if you limit the amount of time people can speak, you'll get around to it faster, and so it's more relevant when you do bring it up. It's like, you know, when you spoke, Ms. Smith, you know, you mentioned this, and I might disagree with that. People, and it's also, it's a way of articulating your concerns. You have, you can't just be cold, I disagree with what you said. Well, what did she say? It was five minutes ago, right? So you need to be a good part, a good proceduralist and a good council member to say, you remember when you said this? I disagree for the following reasons. That's good, good, not lawmakers, not, good political discussion. Citizens understand what you're talking about, everyone at the table understands what you're talking about. It's incumbent upon you to bring people back to the point that you want to make. And so, in part, I would say you could limit it by time, in part, by just being a good debater, if you will, to make sure you bring everybody, bring the issue back up that was raised that you wanted to concern, and you're taking notes while she's speaking, right? So it's a practice thing for you.
But then to her point, you can also use that point of information.
Right.
Absolutely.
Which we haven't really used like that very much, so, but it'd be a helpful tool. So I'm wondering about study sessions and the application of this, because what ideal situation for me would be that we do more of that kind of conversation here and be less regulated, and then just be really diligent there to follow really clearly, but I don't know what's the norms there. I mean, we've made a switch here because it's a new council, different ways we communicate, so we've become a little bit more structured to help us not interrupt each other, and it's, sometimes it's been helpful, and other times it's been, ooh, I still want to ask some more questions of someone.
One of, the newest version of Bob's Rules of Order will recognize the difference between types of meeting, study, some could go home, workshops, whatever it happens to be. And there is a means in the new version that'll come out to suspend entirely the rules of order for a study session. So you can do things like talk to the person next to you, talk over somebody, not wait for the floor, engage in debate, okay? As long as that works for your community. Some communities don't like that. They, they want the order, they want to be able to keep things taped, recorded perfectly. But in some communities, study session is a free-form thing. In fact, they don't even sit, they sit more in a kind of a circle like this, as opposed to not having a formalistic mayor position, because they want it to be more informal. And to make it less, less formal, they waive the rules for the study session. You do not waive in these communities things like respect.
That's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Widener suggests he's got another fifteen minutes, are we up for it?
No, I am.
I think, you know, I'd love to get through the rest of this presentation if it's about fifteen, but I don't know what other thoughts are. I've got one saying yes, one saying no, anybody else want to weigh in? Seen another yes? Another yes?
I can do another.
Okay, sir, please continue.
I'll roll, I'll roll fast into fifteen.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. So, this comes up, I've been asked to come in, after I've done these kind of presentations in communities, they always say, well, we also want you to go further on this. And this was done in part at the CML conference, is about how we effectively relate as a council to administrative staff. And a large part of my observations and my experience in relating to staff has a great deal to do with respect, but it's also understanding your staff and where they're coming from. The number of offensive comments I've heard about from city council members, governing body members, whether it's county commissioners, or board of trustees, or city council members, almost defamatory comments about staff and its intent is really harmful to the organization. Now, having said all that, that's kind of offensive. I'm the city council member, of course they're staff, and they can be treated like second-class citizens. What I want to do, and I try to implore people to do, is understand the staff better, and you'll find that your relationships with the staff improve. The communities that have been come in and make this presentation, and this is a very pared-down presentation, have had, their expression to me is, I don't like council member, I don't like going into the civic center or the city hall because I feel staff hates me, okay? Counsel, or the city staff members say, you know, council member so-and-so's a bozo. Bad, bad mojo for a community to not have your staff working with the council. Everyone's on the baseball field, just playing different positions. So this whole thing is about what does, what can you do as an elected official? What effective things can you do to improve your relationships with the elected staff, or your appointed staff, your hired staff, okay? And it goes from the city manager all the way down. And these are just things that I've observed to help the relationship, okay? Number one is that you need to understand where the staff's coming from, okay? The staff has a specific purpose for being here. They just didn't get up one day and walk across the street and say, that looks like a nice building, I'm going to go sit down for a while. They made a concerted effort to be in this building, to serve you. And you need to understand what it is, what their knowledge and perspective is of why they're here, okay? They are very professional people, and I'm not saying this is just defense staff, but for, for the vast majority of them, if not all of them, they have professional degrees, they have commitments that they built upon, and they are committed to public service. One of the examples I use is me. I'm in one of the lowest-paying legal professions that you can find as a lawyer. It's just the way it is, right? And the reason why is because I believe in what I do. It doesn't mean I'm lesser of a lawyer than somebody who makes $700 an hour doing water law, or my best friend who works for extremely large law firm, national firm, who lives in Cherry Hills Village. I don't, okay? But I'm okay with that, and I want council to understand that I, like all the other staff, are here for a reason, and that reason isn't just a job. It's because we're professionals and we get to do what we love to do here. And we all think of our cities like this, they're these bright places and we want to be better, and that's as true to a person. And you find out that these people, especially your longstanding people and staff, think of the city this way, think of your community this way. People who come and go are going to come and go, they may not have this image, but to the executive level people who are here, we wouldn't be here if you didn't shine. I don't work for garbage cities, and that's a true statement. When I get a phone call and somebody says, we'd like your firm to be our general counsel, there are some cities I won't work for, because they don't shine, and because they have a bad reputation, and I don't want to be attached to them. I don't want people to say, oh, I know that city, that city is a piece of garbage, and they have this attorney, so the attorney by implication is the same. So you have to understand, your staff sees your city this way, and you do too, I hope, because you would not have walked the beat to get the votes if you didn't think this was Inglewood, and it could even be better with you being here. Your staff feels the same way. And then the public servant views is that we frustrate, we get frustrated as public servants, we know that people think that we are just on the public dole, that we're just making money and that we have no experience whatsoever, and we're just basically, I've heard it offensively called all sorts of things, but we're just basically ripping off the taxpayers by being here. And we all know that our family loves what we do and they believe in us, and we think we're Superman. I know I'm the best lawyer in the state of Colorado, other than present company. I just know it, and I believe it, and I save cats, even though I'm a dog guy, I save cats every day. This is what I do for a city. But I really do, is I come to work every day and I make the place better. And that's the perspective all of your staff has, and you should understand that they're on the same page with you. They believe in the city, they're not here just ripping off the city and somehow just taking money away from the taxpayers. Another thing that you need to realize and understanding and relating to your staff is that, this comes up a lot in communities, is the council members always say, you don't understand, I get complaints. Yeah, yeah. You know, how many citizens called me today to complain to me about council, about, well, not snowplowing, but that's very common, they called the city attorney about their street not getting plowed, because they think it's a legal right to have their street plowed. I get complaints, too. So does your staff, and they probably get more than you do. You just don't know about it, because they solved the problem without you ever knowing. It's true, it's a fact of life. And so when you come to us and say, I got complaints, most of them smile and say, let me talk, talk to me about it, when they really want to say, oh, yeah, you want to hear about complaints? Let me tell you about what I've heard recently, okay? And this is another thing, is that your staff members get so many complaints, and we handle so many off-the-wall stuff on a daily basis, we're kind of immune to the one complaint, you know? Whereas you as a council member, and I use this with a former mayor of mine, it's like I told her, your hair is always on fire. It's just chill out, please, okay? It's not that bad, we will take care of it in due course, in the right way. And that's, there's a very different, I sit in so many meetings in which the council body, the council member or a mayor, and single, oftentimes a single council member will be just erupting over some issue, and I look at all the staff who's been assembled to help solve the problem, and they are truly in meditation mode, because they know they'll take care of it and it'll get fixed, okay? And understand that one means one. This is a very big problem for some council members. One complaint is one person in your community, it's not everybody, okay? I can't tell you how many times I've been told by council members, and we see through this, as staff members, we know that you are, you don't want to be criticized, and you want your city to look beautiful, and you want everything, everybody to be happy, we get that. But when you come to us and say, I received 150 calls this weekend all about the pothole on Elk Street, we know you're probably not telling us the truth. Why? Because, one, we didn't get the call, and, two, if I called the other council members, they didn't get any call either. And that doesn't happen that way. So always be cautious about freaking out about that one citizen. And also, one citizen really does mean one. It doesn't make it the most important thing in the community. It's not, it just doesn't happen that way. Staff is oftentimes running after a, what we call a hundred-person problem, a problem that large people are suffering from, and they're trying to solve that problem. The fact that you got a phone call about a problem does not rise that to the level. Again, you're a council member, we respect you, and we work with you, but you have to understand that staff has got a lot going on, and oftentimes, one is not one. One is not everybody. Recognize that staff is a team seeking to address problems. And sometimes you pick off a staff member and you say, I want you to fix this. One, you shouldn't be giving direction to staff anyway, in most large communities, you should be working for the city manager's office in accordance with the protocols that the manager's set up. But understand that oftentimes, when we as staff solve a problem, we're going to work as a team to get it done, because it's more effective. One guy, one woman's not going to solve your problem for you. We work as a team, and sometimes it takes time. It just takes time to work through it, because we got to make sure we address the problem completely. For a good example, is a rock, a large rock that was placed by a citizen in the right-of-way, in the traveled portion of the right-of-way, because he didn't want people parking next to his house. It was in a neighborhood that had no curb gutter or sidewalk, just a street and went into the yard. So he bought a big rock and he popped it inside of his house in the traveled portion of the right-of-way, okay? Citizen, council member sees it, knows this is a hazard, starts screaming about the fact that rock's got to be removed, contacts Public Works Department, the rock isn't moved within 24 hours. Council member goes ballistic, wants that Public Works Director dead on a stick, when in fact, what the Public Works Director did was immediately come to the city attorney's office, work through management, get it all set up so that we could lawfully take the rock out of the right-of-way and deal with it in a very constructive way that would be, that would resolve the issue. Don't freak out, because we do work as a team most of the time, and we are the A Team, that's another topic. Don't become part of the problem. This is my favorite admonition for council members about working with staff. You walk in and you have a huge problem, and your hair is on fire, and you are relying upon one, something a citizen told you. Now, I love citizens, and they're what we're here for, but I will tell you that, hmm, a percentage of the time, you don't get the full poop from the council or from the citizen. They don't necessarily tell you the truth. Best examples in my entire career, although I've heard a million times that people drive 60 miles an hour down the road, when we've done the survey and put the strips out and tested the speeds, it's not even close. Never, as close as they say it's going to be. But by having the council member come in and just automatically believe the citizen that people are driving 60 and demand action, you become part of the problem, because not only do we have to try to address the situation in an accurate way, we also make you happy, and you're part of the problem here. So work with them as a team, don't become another citizen complaining about the problem. Realize that we're all in it together. So, trying to think of the point on this one. We don't, we don't, we don't farm you out, we understand that you're taking the heat, and we know that as a staff, and we're not the ones on the front line, so we do give you a great deal of deference in dealing with citizens. And so we are here for you to soften the blow and sometimes often take the blame. And I will do that for council members, as will all the people in the staff in Centennial, they will basically be the person who contacts the irate citizen to try to solve the problem the best that we can. We don't usually make you, throw you out the door first, usually. We also want to desperately make you look good. This is one of the big things that I see uniformly, uniformly in city staff, is that we love our councils to look good. We don't want a reputation, we don't want you to look bad or ugly. We go out of our way to make sure that you have the information you need and are can be constructive member of the council. That's one of the things I love doing. So when I have, for example, an ex-city mayor that I have breakfast with, they told me that in eight years, the one thing she enjoys is the fact that I made her look good. That is all I need. Now, don't tell Centennial they don't have to pay me anymore, but it was incredibly valuable to know that I made somebody look good. And that's, you should all, that should resonate with you, that your staff wants that to happen, and you do too, okay? We want our council members to look good, to be successful. And be careful of making promises. This is another thing that council members tend to do, and it causes a lot of consternation with staff, is that you will tell a citizen, you'll fix it within a certain amount of time, or you promise you'll take care of it, before you have all the information, and then now we are having a hard time making you look good, because we can't do it, for example. If that rock, for example, was not in the right-of-way, and for some whatever reason the road situation didn't plow out so that we owned the property, it was a lawfully existing rock, and you promised that you'd have that thing removed in 24 hours, now you're part of the new problem, and you've made a promise, and we're going to make you look bad. Promises can make council members look bad. Always wait and get all the information that you can, until you make, make a decision. And think about fairness in everything you do. You do this anyway, I think council members are pretty good about being fair, but understand that fairness goes a long way, making sure that you're going to treat everybody the same, and the respect comes back into it. The famous statement that there's three or four sides to every story is so true, because I have rarely seen one person characterize a situation, a problem accurately. It usually takes three or four people to give you all the information that you need to act. But unfortunately, council members tend to act on, oftentimes, on one person thinking there's a problem or explaining the situation. The best example are recently when I had a complaint by a citizen with regard to his front yard having a nuisance because he was stockpiling stuff that could not be seen from the public right-of-way. His statement to me is that, how dare your code compliance people cite me for, for having junk, because it can't be seen from the public right-of-way and your code requires it to be seen that way. I'm going to get a lawyer and sue the bejesus out of the city, okay? Wow, that's terrible, that we would cite somebody and they're not in violation of law. So I go out to the property, and what I find out is not only can you see the junk from the public right-of-way, probably from an aircraft flying over, everywhere you can see this junk. In fact, the five cars that were all unlicensed that he had in his driveway were full of junk. And so his position was, you can't see it because the car is blocking the view of the junk. You have to look in the windows. So I'm lied to by the citizen. Citizens do that on occasion. Make sure you get all the information. And staff desperately wants to maintain their credibility with you, so one of the things in every community I work is, you better not lie to a council member, even if it's ugly news. Bear bad news should be always correct, and so you don't ever ruin your credibility because that council member will be back and forth with you all the time. And the staff will endeavor always to be upfront and factually correct with you. And this is very true, especially with the city manager. I've gone through a lot of ex-city manager situations where we've terminated city managers, and almost invariably, the mistake that was made is shared by the council and the manager. I always tell the manager to leave on this count, part of the preparation, but it's true. It's because the relationship you have with your staff is a lot like a marriage, especially with your senior-level city manager, city attorney. Because it is like a marriage in the sense that you have to communicate. And every time I've been called into a community to help fire a city manager, when I've analyzed the situation, it's because the council never talked to the city manager about the problem, and the city manager never got a chance to talk back, and they never communicated. They wrote him or her off automatically. Communication is absolutely necessary for an effective city to run, and so always think that way. Talk, and the training we did with Centennial just the other night, we had a slide that had 100 talk to the manager, communicate with the manager, communicate with the manager as a rule to make a successful city. Too many cities don't talk frankly with their city manager. Now, his phone's going to be ringing off. Okay? And then honesty is absolutely necessary. It's a cornerstone for what we do with each other, with each other. We are honest with each other, and you're going to give the honest poop to me, and I'm going to give you honest stuff back, and we're going to solve the problem, and we're not going to be basically hanging each other out. Too true that people make mistakes. I have too many council members or mayors actually go ballistic over a mistake the city made. It happens. You do it, we do it, we all do it. We all make mistakes. Now, mistakes on the same issue over and over again should have caused people's hair to go on fire, but people make mistakes, and it's just absolutely true that we're not going to get it right perfectly all the time. So let's not judge staff about making a mistake unless it's a mistake on the same thing, okay? I like this one, true picture, so, you know, it just happens once in a while. Happens once in a while. Another thing is that credit, this is a big one for council member-staff relationship, is that your staff works really hard for you, and they deserve the credit when things get solved along with you. We want you to look good. We want to give you the credit. We want to, we will stand behind you and applaud it with everybody, as long as you turn over and wink at us once in a while, okay? It's really important because you do not solve the problems by yourself. Your staff performs a lot of the work, a lot of the work. And this is another slide that we've always used repeatedly, and you have to understand when you walk in front of a staff person, this is what they see. It's that picture again, okay? We are scared to death for the most part, maybe not the manager. We're scared to death of you guys, okay? You're very powerful people. We have hundreds and thousands of citizens who say they want you to be their representative. You have clout. But understand staff, especially mid-levels and down, are really intimidated by you. And that when you go and even pose a simple question to them sometimes, they will quake in their boots, and it causes them some consternation because they've got their boss's boss in front of them, and they are really sometimes at a quandary as who they're going to serve. Do I take care of your issue when my boss has already loaded my plate up? Who am I responsible to? Understand you create that conflict. Even though that's truly how powerful you are, this is what staff sees in front of them. And what we have to be concerned about is that they've got multiple obligations to serve. Number one is to the city manager. They have got to do their job or they'll be fired. The manager's the one who tells them, or the manager's subordinate managers, tells them what to do. That's who they serve, not you. So you place them in a very difficult position when you go to them and say, "I want you to drop everything and do this for me," even if it's just to provide information sometimes. I had a council member go to our GIS director and tell them that he needed immediately, immediately, an analysis of his district and a program written for him that would single out each single piece of property in a program that was, he could use on his pad to identify when he was going door-to-door for election, to make sure he ticked off who he got to talk to. And he wanted it coded so he could say, "Owner, renter, votes for me, against me?" He wanted us to create a personal database, a personal app for him to drop everything. That's a true story. And it's an example where this GIS person lost all of her hair because now what's she supposed to do? She was given a direct command by her boss's boss, and that was a difficult position. So the city manager had the difficult phone call to call the council member back and say, "Not going to happen, not on my watch. Tough situation to put your manager in or the GIS." And then lastly, this is it. It goes back again to ego, you know? It's like you treat, if you take off the ego when you deal with people and you deal with your staff, things work really well because we're all working for the public. We're all trying to make the public's dreams come true. Get ego out of the way, and we're all in the same team.
Questions or comments from council to conclude? Councilmember Olson?
I know we're getting late. I have two questions. One would be the one where citizens, you know, they have a complaint, and there's always several sides to the story as your slideshow is here. They come to our meetings and say things, and we have, I don't know, other councils that do this the same way, but we actually can ask them questions. And then, then we have them all sit, and we do make comments after that. And I'm concerned sometimes that we don't have enough information to really be making comments. How would you suggest we control ourselves on that one so that we don't take one side just because it sounds like it's true? It probably is from their perspective, feels like it's 60 miles an hour, but it was actually 35.
Or what you're referring to is more commonly like the audience business portion, unprepared. They basically have an opportunity to come to the microphone and speak with the council at each meeting. It's the most common situation.
Yes, we do that, yeah. And they can sign up for five minutes, or they can get three minutes if they come on the night of.
Good, because this is how it typically plays out. So you're cold, you don't know this person from Adam, they step up the microphone and say, "They're driving 60 miles an hour up and down my street." We have a rule, and Centennial has worked very effectively, and it says right there in our road mapping on the agenda that do not expect an immediate reply. Your matter you raise will be sent to staff for staff to do further research, and you will be contacted. Then we have an internal policy that immediately the next day, and they have to leave contact information, we contact them, tell them who the staff member who's responsible for following up with them is, and here's their contact information, and then we do the background information to find out the truth or veracity of what they're saying. And that's the effective way not to have, one, the meeting bogged down with the debate on whether it's really 60 or 65, right? And, but we still address their concerns. And if you're looking them in the eye, and your body posture says, "We're going to look into your issue," that's all they expected that night. They really didn't expect you to come and say, "Okay, tomorrow morning, we'll post a new speed limit at 20 miles per hour for you. Will that make you happy?" They don't expect that. They want you to listen to them, and then they want some follow-up. So I, we get in that practice.
Yeah, so not piling on and figuring it out, yeah, right there. I agree with that. I'd like to have us talk about how we do that better. The second one is talking, communicating with the city manager or the city attorney, who are the two folks that really report to us. Communication is important. How do you suggest, I mean, some of us talk one-to-one with them, some more than others, some a lot more than others, and then, but as a body, we don't necessarily talk and give feedback. What have you found to be helpful there?
Wow.
And limits for that.
Excellent question. I mean, I always tell, especially in Centennial and other cities, that, you know, there's very few employees that you own, manager, attorney, judge maybe. You know, not to touch the judge, but that's just the rule, right? So.
Not anymore.
Oh, okay. Now the judge.
We're making it.
Now the judge.
But after the days.
Here's the policy that I've used effectively for almost my entire career, learned by another senior-level attorney who taught me how to do this. Here's how it works. One, your city manager should have protocol for how you reach him and when you talk to them and how much time you spend. Most city managers will say, "My phone's open, my door's open, you call me anytime." Managers would rather be talked to than not talked to. That's the general rule with managers. Attorneys can sometimes be a little bit different. One, oftentimes, the attorney's office is way understaffed, whereas the manager has a huge plethora of people working for him, and sometimes he can pull people off.
A little biased.
Might be, but this is true in my experience. The manager has people they can pull and slide around and try to address the issue. Oftentimes, the attorney, because of the nature of a legal work, you don't have somebody to slide in and handle the work, and so it just piles up on top of you. So what I've effectively done with my councils is I set up expectations that they are to contact me at any time that they wish to, but we have to have some certain levels of protocol in place. I'm not saying these are perfect, but I have protocols in place that you're allowed to bring to me anything you wish to bring to me. I will be asking you questions when we talk to find out whether or not this is a problem that should be experienced by the entire council, or whether it's solely your problem that I could assist you with. I will guarantee all members of city council some level of confidentiality on matters I deem not to affect the body. So if you come to me and say, "I am thinking about leashing cats, and I want some research of other communities that leash cats," and I would think, "Okay, this is future legislation. The rest of the council doesn't have to know about this. You're still in the formative stage." I can do that for you. The rule I put on council member getting work from the city attorney's office is we don't do more than three hours of work without all of the council approving for any one council member on a single topic, and that three hours can't be abused repeatedly. So you can't come to me like one council member did and say, "Here's a list of 10 things I want you to do, three hours on each of them." It doesn't work that way. I got a bunch of other stuff oftentimes answerable to the city manager that he needs work. So you've got to be backing off a little bit, but I will be very upfront and frank with you. We will talk personally. You should have confidence until that point in time when I tell you, "This, you want to kill the mayor," and this is stopped right here, okay? Or, "I don't like the mayor." Just kidding. So there is a point at which I have.
Doubt for mayors.
It's councils I love. So there is a point at which you talk to the city attorney, that there's got to be parameters about what you're conveying to us. If you're talking about wanting to undermine the majority's decision on a matter, or sue the city, for example, I have to put the kibosh on it. Now I'm under an ethical obligation because I represent the council, not you. I've got to tell everyone in the council. So I also play this game. Stop right there. I'm going to advise you to inform the entire council about what you're telling me, and I will leave it upon you to do so. And if you don't, depending on what you told me, I may have to do so on my own. So I always try to work with my council members carefully on what they're bringing to me so that we don't cross the line, but they've got to come to me or else I can't do my job. And I love them all, and I've got to tell you, most of the time, 99 times out of 100, they're all on the right side of the line. I help them out, I draft things for them, I get my staff to do the research, and everything works perfectly. Rarely is ever a problem under those protocols.
Any questions or comments before we conclude? Go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
I just want to say thank you so much for spending this evening with us. I think this information was really helpful, and I think a lot of the things that we talked about are really relevant to us, and so I think it's really going to help us move forward in a more effective meeting, so thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. And I appreciate the opportunity because, like I told you, I love doing this. And I just want you to know, if I see you in CML someday and you say, "We did one tiny thing that you suggested and it worked," all I ask for is look over your shoulder and wink at me, okay?
That's great.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Widener. You know, before we adjourn, I would like to do a brief council member choice if anybody has anything this evening we want to sort of cover. Anybody want to kick us off on a choice?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
You too, and thank you.
Happy holiday.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to access my outlook, my city's outlook, and I'm having some difficulty now, but we've had a couple emails come in. Examples that come to mind are a citizen brought to light some concerns regarding the new apartments behind Broadway, and then there was another gentleman who emailed this week regarding, I believe, some encampments that are starting to appear along the plat. They seem to generically be coming into city council. At my work, we have one generic email that comes from about three or four people, and just the first person that gets on, I did reply all, and then everybody knows it's been responded to. How is that handled here? Who should be handling those emails?
Those have been addressed by staff. And in some cases, for example, the homeless encampment issue, that's going to be coming forward actually, hopefully, for a study session. We need to talk to the mayor, Mayor Protem about agendizing that matter because that is becoming to be quite a concern. But we have a multi-jurisdictional group working on that issue, and that's been in the works for several months. So Police Impact Team, Urban Drainage Flood Control, Colorado Water Conservation Board, Public Works are all working together to look at that stretch of the river. But a lot of times when you get the issue, when the email comes to you as council, staff gets it first and we're forwarding it to you. So probably what we need to do in those instances are denunciate what we have done on those matters, specifically to the woman that raised the issue about the Broadway Akoma loft's not enough light. Well, first of all, they weren't done yet with the project. They haven't put all the poles up, and they didn't, but in addition to that, we talked to the developer, Medici, and they're going to put additional wall pack lighting on the building. So they've agreed to do that. Probably what we need to do is, when we communicate back to those residents, is also copy council. So you know that's the case.
Thank you. That would be helpful. And, you know, I appreciate these specifics on these, and it was just more as the months and years progressed.
Sure.
Who is responding to those emails. I think feedback is critical when somebody does raise an issue with us. So thank you. That is good.
The short answer to that, though, is if you receive an email, or even if you receive an email that you know has gone to the rest of the council, hit forward to the city manager. It's his responsibility to share that out and make sure that all council members have received the same information, and that way you avoid any issues of violation of open meetings.
Please run me through that again. So I'm sorry, any email I'm getting from a constituent should be forwarded to the city manager?
If you're getting an issue from a constituent that you want the rest of the governing body to be aware of, if you want to keep it secret, that's absolutely your right.